Well, it is now 6:30 and we welcome everyone to tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting. This meeting is being held via video conferencing. However, Henry TV is streaming live on the website online. And also, you can watch the meeting on Charter Spectrum Channel 180 and it is also on Facebook Live. So at this time, what we would like to do is I invite you all to join me in the invocation for this evening. Heavenly Father, we just want to say thank you for your presence during this meeting, Father. We ask that your will will be done tonight. We also ask, Father God, that you would just bless Henry County with peace, health, and harmony. And we pray this in your name and all that agree, please say amen. We will now, if you will, please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So at this time, now we will call tonight's Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We have an announcement, of course, and then we have six amendments, which we will vote on separately. The announcement is that the public hearing ULDC AM-20-02, which is an ordinance by Henry County to amend multiple sections of the Henry County Code of Ordinances regulating development within the Highway Quarter Overlay District, has been postponed. This was advertised, but again, this has been postponed. Regarding the agenda, again, we have about six amendments and we'll take those one at a time. The first agenda amendment is to add a request from the county manager regarding the resolution award and a contract for the Fairview Public Safety Complex. Do I have a motion to accept that amendment? I see a motion by Commissioner Holmes. Second by Commissioner Barn. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise by signaling your hand. Thank you. Just for the record, any opposed? Thank you. The second amendment is a request by the county manager, which is a resolution requesting the Board of Commissioners approval for this small business restart and nonprofit assistance program from the committee's recommendations of those submissions for award. So at this time, we'll accept a motion to accept that amendment. Okay, I saw Commissioner Holmes and Commissioner Thomas. Any discussion? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, it looks to be unanimous. Thank you. The next amendment is to take two items off of the consent agenda because funding source has been updated. And those are the items under the resolution approving a lease agreement for a one-stock Pierce Impel rescue, impale rescue. And then, of course, the resolution approving a lease agreement for a one-stock Pierce mid-mound aerial. So at this time, is there a motion to amend the agenda to include that? So you see Commissioner Wilson, then Commissioner Barn. Any discussion? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Thank you. That looks to be unanimous. And then we have a request to remove item 9A, which is the T-SLOSS Resolution from the agenda. Is there a motion to remove the T-SLOSS Resolution from the agenda? Okay, any other call again, is there a motion to remove the T-SLOSS Resolution from the agenda? Okay, seeing none, it will remain on the agenda. That was item 9A. The next item is to move our public comment speaker, our district attorney, Darius Patillo, up on the agenda to speak during or after the judicial position presentation. Do we have a motion to accept that move? Because he did sign up for public comment and we're moving that public comment to the item right after the presentation. Is there a motion? See, motion by Commissioner Thomas. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Clemmons. Any discussion? All in favor of that, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, is that, okay, I think that was, any opposed? Okay, that was unanimous. Thank you. The next agenda amendment is to add a resolution designated the Henry County's Voting Delicate for the annual ACC policy agenda. That will be moved onto the Board of Commissioners meeting as item 9C. Is there a motion to accept that amendment? Let's see, Commissioner Thomas, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Clemmons. Okay, a second, any discussion? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. That seems to be unanimous. Thank you. And then the next agenda item to be removed, these were public hearings that were advertised but have now been removed from the agenda to be postponed. And this is public hearing COMP AM-20-02, which is ARP Holdings in District 2. That was requesting an amendment to the comprehensive plan for property located south of Highway 20 West and east of Simpson Road, Simpson Mill Road. And the request was to amend the future land use map. So that has been recommended to be removed, as well as the second, the related public hearing for its same properties. And it was to request a resounding from office institutional to general commercial for property located off of Highway 20 West and east of Simpson Mill Road. And again, that was in District 2 and the request was for a retail center. So those two public hearings that were advertised are being removed from the agenda and postponed. Is there a motion to accept those requests to amend?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and then a second from Commissioner Thomas. Any discussion? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, well, those were the items to be amended, all of those, except the T-SLOSS will remain on the agenda and the changes were made. So we now need to accept a motion to accept the changes to the agenda as just voted upon. Okay, I think I saw Commissioner Barn first and then Commissioner Holmes second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, that seems to be unanimous. So the agenda with those amendments have been approved. So we will now move into our first item, actually, which is to appoint the District 4 reappointment to the Council on Aging. We have Ms. Mary Jo Blunt is to serve the term 9/15/2020 through 9/15/2024. And that is in District 4. Again, it's a reappointment on the Council on Aging. Do we have a motion to approve that reappointment? I see a motion from Commissioner Thomas.
Second.
Okay, a second from Commissioner Clemmons. Any discussion? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, that was unanimous. We're now moving to the consent agenda. There's about six items on the consent agenda. The first one is a SLOSS Resolution approving a reimbursement agreement with Snapping Shells EMC for Peaksville Road. The second one is for the airport, is a resolution approving the design of a taxiway improvement, beacon replacement and obstruction clearing and associated contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation for reimbursement to Henry County, to the Henry County Airport. And then the other airport resolution, again, is awarding a contract for design build services for an airport FBO terminal building and area improvements at the Henry County Airport. And then the next consent agenda items is from the Henry County Police Department, a resolution approving purchase of 125 Avon C-50 first responder kits under the COVID-19 coronavirus emergency supplemental funding from the Department of Public Safety in the amount of $69,125. The next resolution is awarding bid 21-09 for the annual police uniform contract to Galls LLC in the amount of $338,153. And then again, another police department resolution approving 12-month lease from Flock Safety System is a license plates reader for an additional 50 Flock Falcon cameras for $112,500 for the Henry County Police Department. And then under the Henry County Fire Department, those two items have been removed from the consent agenda. So we'll move to those after the consent agenda is approved. And then we have two resolutions on the consent agenda from Facilities Maintenance. It's a resolution awarding bid 21-12 for service and maintenance of Henry County generators. It's an annual contract. And then again, the final item under the consent agenda is resolution awarding bid 21-13 for replacing foreman at the Henry County Department of Family Services Building. So at this time, that concludes the consent agenda. Are there any other items that need to be considered to be removed? Hearing none, seeing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read. See Commissioner Wilson as a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Clemmons as a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Thomas, was that to vote in favor of it? It came up a little early. Was it to discuss something?
I just wanted to make a comment if I could, Madam Chair, but I am voting in favor of it.
Okay, we had a motion this second, okay, and all did approve unanimously. Okay, you may make your comments now. Thank you.
I simply wanted to congratulate Commissioner Dee Clemmons on the work that's being done at the airport in District 2. It is an asset that the county has had for a number of years and I just want to thank her so much for upgrading that asset and making it something that will be an economic engine for all of us. And I just want to say kudos and congratulations to you for job well done. I'm certainly looking forward to more information about the work that's being done out there and I can't wait to visit.
All right, thank you. Okay, all right, well, we'll now move to our next item and these are items that have been added to the agenda. We'll now invite Ms. Lynn Plankton to present the resolution award and a contract for the Fairview Public Safety Complex. Okay, we'll call again for Ms. Lynn Plankton.
One more time? What am I doing? Camera, here we are. Good evening, Chair Wood and Commissioners. Before we do, is a resolution awarding request for proposal number 21-04, design build services for a police precinct and fire station number 6. The Henry County Purchasing Department issued RFP 21-04 for the design build services for police precinct and fire station number 6, complying with all county and OCGA competitive award requirements. Multiple proposals were submitted and following evaluation, two proposals were at the top of the list. Harold Daniel Construction with a total evaluation score of 404 and JR Bowman Construction with a total evaluation score of 415. Both Daniel and Bowman were interviewed by the evaluation committee. Following the interviews, Daniel's grand total score amounted to 478 and Bowman's grand total score amounted to 465. Daniel's best and final offer total is $4,760,171. Bowman's proposal total is $3,941,000. The proposal submitted by JR Bowman Construction Company is most advantageous to the county and represents the best value for the county. This project will be funded with SLOSS five funds and I'll be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none. We'll now open up the floor for a motion.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Holmes.
I want to say I'm so excited for our police and our firemen. We've been working on upgrading their facilities for a number of years and I, you know, I'm just, I'm just so proud of this board for helping us make this happen this evening. We're going to have a new fire station, a new police station in the middle of our commercial corridor and it's going to benefit so many people. So again, thanks so much and I'm going to move to approve.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I think I heard Commissioner Clemmons. Okay, all right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hands. Thank you. That is a unanimous approval. Thank you much. Okay, all right, our next item is a resolution requesting the Board of Commissioners approval of the Small Business Restart and Nonprofit Assistance Program Committee's recommended submissions for the award. And I understand that Mr. David Smith is going to be making that presentation for Ms. Kimberly Monas.
Good evening, Board and Commissioners. It's Kimberly today.
Okay, hello, hello, Ms. Monas. It's good to see you.
Hello, good to see you too. I'm presenting a summary update of the Henry County Small Business and Nonprofit Assistance Program progress. The county established a review committee comprised of one voting member for each district and the chair for a total of six members. Applications are vetted by the Grand Administration Unit and then presented to the review committee for evaluation and their recommendations are then submitted to the Board of Commissioners for approval. The online application originally posted on August 19th. The BOC-appointed review committee has met three times, August 28th, September 4th, and September 11th. They requested to review and evaluate approximately 25 applications per each meeting, which runs between two and three hours. Small business applications, all businesses are eligible for up to $10,000 with post-award approved reimbursement submissions. The application was revised on August 28th to accommodate the review committee's requested clarification for two application questions and attachments. Those applicants who submitted prior to the change were notified by email, advised exactly what additional information was required, if any, and given generous time to respond. At this time, 101 small business applications have been received to date. 62 of the applications have been vetted by the Grand Administration Unit and evaluated in board-appointed review committee. 14 of the applicants have been recommended by the review committee. Seven will be on the agenda being presented for approval this evening. The remaining 38 applications are in various states of processing. As far as the nonprofit applications are concerned, there are 28 nonprofit applications to date. All 28 are currently in the vetting process by the Grand Administration Unit. No applications have yet been evaluated by the review committee. The first group will be evaluated on September 25th. Small business applicants are the immediate benefactor of their awards, but the nonprofit applicants have individual budget and community program submissions to review. The nonprofit must have existing financial and personnel resources to administer their program proposal under reimbursement-only funding. Next screen, please, Jamie. What you have before you is a resolution to accept the review committee's recommendations to award the first seven small businesses for funding. Staff requests that the board approve the review committee's recommendations to award these Henry County small businesses with COVID-19 relief funding. I'll be happy to take any questions from the board.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. So we'll now open it up for questions or comments from the board. Okay, again, any questions or comments from the board?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Clemmons.
So I wanted to make sure that we had 100, if you could just state the number of applicants that we had from the small businesses that applied again. I thought that your screen was going to move with a slideshow, but it stayed on one screen the whole time.
Yes, ma'am. There was not a slideshow, just the presentation screen. There were 101 small business applications received to date.
And how many were awarded?
Thus far, seven this evening and there'll be seven more on the October 6th.
So out of 101, only 14 businesses made. Okay, are we going to send out some form of a letter? I'm requesting that we send out some form of a letter to those businesses that did not make it and an explanation on why they did not get the approval.
Yes, ma'am, we certainly are. We've already done a decline letter and the decline letter states specifically, "The review committee determined that your submission could not be funded in this round of consideration. Your application does not provide the requested documentation to prove negative financial impact on your small business due to COVID-19 in 2020. We encourage you to reapply if you can clearly demonstrate the adverse effect of COVID-19 on your small business with measurable and verifiable data." And that will be sent to each business.
What I'm asking is to be a little bit more detailed to say you did not provide a bank statement or you, your financials were not in order. I think that we do a justice to our community and to our small businesses when we let them know why. Other than that, you're going to get a whole lot of calls and if you don't get the calls, we're going to get the calls about why they weren't approved. And I don't want to have to call you guys to ask, "Why wasn't this business approved?" Just go ahead and put it in there quickly, be very specific about why they weren't approved.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, okay, anything else, Commissioner Clemmons? Okay, Commissioner Holmes.
Yeah, this was an item that was added this evening, correct? So can you, can you give us a list of the businesses that were awarded the funding?
Yes, sir, it was on the screen that Jamie previously had up. Jamie, could you put that screen back up? There it is, sir.
Can we zoom it in a little bit?
I don't know. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, and I've got a question or two. Just a clarification. You did say that we had received 101 applications and that you had vetted 62, correct?
Yes, ma'am, thus far. We do them.
I'm sorry?
We do them in groups. The review committee requested to see so many at a time and they're, they spend about two to three hours at each meeting. So we put forth as many as 25, sometimes up to 30 in front of them at one time.
Right, and I think I heard you say that you presented these seven this, tonight, and then you're going to have another seven at the next meeting, but you still have 38 that are still in various stages and you're still also vetting the nonprofits. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, the only other thing, I'm not sure if we, maybe at a future board meeting, I know that I've received a couple of calls from different businesses that are interested in whether or not we will, the board will revisit those that have received PPP and the allocation and we may need to ask our county manager to clarify that because there have been at least several calls, I know I've received about that, in this criterion process.
Yes, ma'am. Do you want to ask that question now or do you want to?
Yeah, we can go ahead and allow the county manager, whomever, to clarify that because it seems to be confusing to some. Whomever can respond to it. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners in the community.
Good evening.
There have been several different counties that have been allowing PPP as well as a idol. But so far, we have not brought before you, and we're thinking about bringing back before you a change to that because our concern is about duplication of benefits. And we don't want to duplicate the benefits if they've already received something. And so we just want to address at this time, those that have the most immediate need and have not yet received those funds. But we will be bringing back because it was one of the committee recommendations as well to revisit that and that's what we intend to do.
Okay, and while you're there, Mr. Smith, will you clarify again for those who may not be following the full process that we're in phase one, or at least the allocation of phase one of the CARES Act funding? If you could elaborate on that, just to...
So we're not referring to this as CARES Act funding anymore. I want to remind you, Madam Chair, that we did set aside fund balance for this particular purpose, to help small businesses as well as to help the nonprofits. And so we're using our funding to do that.
Okay, and thank you for the clarification again. Okay. That concludes my questions. I see Commissioner Thomas with her hand raised. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes, Madam Chair, I've received a couple of questions as well. In addition to considering people that didn't receive the PPE loans, my question has been about people that we have appointed to different positions. And because of their appointment, they are not able to participate in this whole process and asked us to revisit some of that. I do understand that we do want to make sure that commissioners and their immediate families are not part of this whole process. But we have left out a whole group of people who give their time and energy to appointments, who help support this government, who cannot apply for this loan because of the way we wrote the original application. And I think we need to revisit that whole process. I have no problem with the fact that we wrote ourselves out of it, okay? We did take out our immediate family, that's, okay, that's fine. But there are some people who really do spend a lot of time and are not compensated, own small businesses that we appointed to different positions, that work for this county, who are not allowed to apply for this support. And I would like for Commissioners to consider round two. When this starts, that we look at how we can not look and appear that we're punishing them for the services they do, but can't participate in these dollars as well. That was the question that I've received as well. And again, I'd like for, I'm sorry, the young lady who gave the report tonight, to look at and give us a sense, not tonight, of 101 applications. What is the stumbling block that's consistently coming before you all that people? What barrier is consistent among those that are being denied that we need to look at? What is that barrier? And we need to know that so we can help our small businesses understand that we want them to have this funding that came down from the government. And I don't expect for you to give me that answer tonight, but please send that information to us. What is the consistent barrier? Is it documents? Is it, well, what is the barrier that's causing so few people to be approved, I think, is the question.
I can give you a short answer this evening and a better one if you'd like later.
Yes, I'm not expecting you to give that to me tonight, but that's something I would like to know in the future, okay?
Would you like an answer, a short answer now or no answer?
Yeah, you're welcome to.
Okay, short answer is, overall, the applicants that have not gone through the approval process to recommendation are failing to show the negative impact of COVID-19 on their small business with measurable and verifiable data. Period.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, again, we've had some discussion about this and questions. And again, I've already heard some recommendations that if you could come back to the board at a future state regarding those that have been appointed, who've been unable to qualify to approve and then, of course, the reconsideration of the PPP or PPE funding. And then again, if there's a detailed explanation, you know, down the road, if you have something that a commissioner made, you can follow up with them there. Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
One other thing too, I do want to make sure, and I'm not sure if this was a part of the process that took place, but those who are reviewing these applications, the people that we have appointed and the people that you have in that room, how they put something in place to make sure they know that this information is very confidential? It is not to be discussed outside of their walls, outside of their meeting? Did they sign some type of document about that? I've had some people say, "Well, I didn't want to apply because I'm concerned about my personal information getting into the community, being talked about in areas that it should not be talked about." Have you all put some type of documentation before these individuals to say that by being here and having information of sensitive status... here and having information of sensitive status, you have their bank statements, you have their financials, you know whether or not they are in need of financial assistance personally? Has something been put in place to state that this information must remain confidential within this room, within this group only?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I can let you know that they do sign a conflict of interest and confidentiality agreement. All six of the appointed committee members have signed. The document was reviewed by the county attorney, Mr. Dogstetter, and it specifically prohibits them from removing any information from county premises, it prevents them from sharing any information about the status of an applicant, but also in addition to that information, they are given very specific information, but not information that is personally identifying to the applicants, so they do not have the access to the bank statements, they do not have access to the tax information. I provide that for them orally during the review process. What they have access to is income statements and the type of information that allows them to determine whether or not there has been a negative impact of COVID-19 on the business.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, CN nine, we'll now open the floor for a motion to approve, or a motion. Okay, Commissioner Thomas, if you'll clarify the motion.
Motion to approve as presented tonight.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion, is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Clement is a second. Any further discussion, comments, or questions? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, that looks to be unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll now move into the next items, which were moved from the consent agenda. The first one is a Henry County Fire Department Resolution to Approve a Lease Agreement for One Stock Pierce Impale Rescue. So we'll invite up Deputy Chief Jonathan Burnett, or Mr. Johnson, our Deputy County Manager, all right?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I'll kick it off, and I'll let Chief Burnett take us home with it. I just wanna thank the Commissioners for moving this off consent force. We did have a typo in our resolution that was found, that presented a capital financing. This will be a lease plan that we're trying to move our large equipment to, so we do have that, that option of leasing, rather than just have to buy outright for definitely, and turning in at a later date, so we have a more financially responsible for our citizens of this equipment, that we, we're not running the ground and costing more maintenance than it is to actually pay for new equipment. So, I just wanna thank the board for that, and this is replacing older sixteen and seventeen year old equipment, and I'll turn it over to Chief Burnett for any specific questions you guys might have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, you have any additional comments, Chief Burnett?
No ma'am, I just wanted to read the resolutions.
Okay.
Tonight you have in front of you a resolution to approve a lease agreement for One Stock Pierce Impale Rescue, at a cost of seventy-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-four cents per year, for seven years, with an optional balloon payment of one hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-two cents, for a total lease amount of six hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred dollars, over seven years with PNC Equipment Finance LLC, using Ten Eight as an authorized Pierce distributor. I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, CN nine, the floor is now open for a motion. I see Commissioner Wilson for a motion, and I saw Commissioner Clement was a second. Okay, thank you. Are any further discussion, comments, or questions? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. That is unanimous, thank you. All right, we'll move directly into the next resolution, which is also from the Fire Department, which is a resolution approving a lease agreement for One Stock Pierce Mid-Mount Aerial, and again, we'll allow Chief Jonathan Burnett to make that presentation.
Yes ma'am, thank you again. This resolution is to approve a lease agreement for One Stock Pierce Mid-Mount Aerial, at a cost of one hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-six cents per year, for seven years, with an optional balloon payment of four hundred and fifty-four thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty cents, for a total lease amount of one million three hundred and eighty thousand dollars, over seven years with PNC Equipment Finance LLC, using Ten Eight as an authorized distributor. This truck is to replace one of our aerial trucks that went out of service last year. As you know, part of the ISO agreement that we were just under, states that we have to have so many aerial trucks to respond to our calls within a certain amount of time. Replacing this area will actually get us back up to where we need to be, it doesn't get us to where we need to be to the final point, but it gets us back up to where we were several months ago, so that's the reason for this truck.
Right, right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the board? CN nine, the floor is now open for a motion. I see Commissioner Barnes' hand raised. Commissioner Thomas as a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Thank you, that seems to be unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
No, thank you, and thank you for your services. So at this time, we'll move into item seven, which is an item from our Tax Commissioner, which is a request from taxpayer to waive penalties and fees, so we'll invite up Tax Commissioner Michael Harris to present the item. And I understand that then we'll allow the taxpayer to move over as a panelist and speak up to, up to ten minutes, so Mr. Michael Harris, Tax Commissioner, welcome.
Good evening Chair, good evening Commissioners. This is a request from Mr. Cornell Patel with the Philod Hotel LLC. He's requesting that all his interests and penalties that have accrued over the last ten months be waived for this, for his 2019 property tax bill. The total amount of interest and penalties to date is two thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty-six cents in interest, and three thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents in penalties, for a total amount of six thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. This has a quick timeline for the board. Original bill was sent on September sixth of 2019, and the final notice was sent in January of this year, January twenty-second. One thing we did do, in light of things that have transpired over the course of the year, liens typically are applied ninety days after the original start, original due date. We deferred that by additional sixty days, so in this case, where the liens would have gone out in February, they actually were deferred until April. The lien was filed on April twenty-second to continue to protect the county's taxation position. Just real quickly, I wanted to read from OCGA Code Section forty-eight five two forty-two, which states that waivers may be considered if there is reasonable cause and not, and is not due to willful neglect or disregard for law, regulations, or instructions. In this particular case, I don't feel as though that provision has been met, and I would like to also add that, and all tax bills clearly state that interest accrues monthly and five percent penalties apply to all delinquent tax bills every hundred and twenty days from the original due date of November sixteenth. Like I said, I believe the applicant or the individual making the request is gonna present his findings, but I just wanted to prepare you with all the facts of the matter that stands right now.
Okay, well, thank you, and I would need someone to please be the timekeeper as Mr. Patel comes forward now, please. Mr. Patel, are you there?
Hey, yes, I'm here. How are you all? Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
Okay, so I'm here, as Mr. Michael said, that, yes, we were in, actually, what we planned that in March, that's when our, all the events start every year, so we figured that we will be having a good business, but because of the pandemic and we have all the canceled events, that we supposed to have it, and it gave us a little bit, it didn't give us a good business this year, and we were in bed safe right now, it will be good help, if we can waive the penalty and interest for the bill of 2019. Right now, we are also got some of the funds from the EIDL, and which I am able to pay in a week for the 2019 tax bill, as I talked to Mr. Michael Harris about it, as long as we can have relief of the penalties and the interest.
Okay, or, is that, that concludes your comments, Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I need to request for.
Okay, okay, well, and we thank you for your comments, and so we'll now come back to the board for a motion to, regarding your request. So, are there any questions or comments from the board before we open the floor for a motion? Commissioner Barnes?
Michael, I wanted to ask you, have you had a conversation with Mr. Patel to see if you could work out any kind of payment plan on this money?
Yeah, Commissioner, we have, we've had a couple of conversations, and as we've done certainly this year, we've been, been extremely mindful in my office just to work with residents and businesses, if they should come across dire, you know, on a case-by-case basis certainly. In his case, my understanding, I think he alluded to it, that he's in position to be able to pay the bill, his concern was with the actual interest and penalties that have accrued. The challenge, and my issue with the request from, from my standpoint is, this is a 2019 bill, and, which was due back in November of 2019. I think he said his intent was to make the payment late in March, and however, you know, with, with, when the pandemic hit, that prevented him from doing so. However, it doesn't relate the fact that it was due back in November of 2019.
Okay.
He had had several conversations.
Yeah, well, that's great, and, you know, we've had these come up before, and we just, we just can't go this way. We'd love to, but the line would line out the door, out to the road if we did this. We just can't do it, and when everybody's done, I'll, I'll make the motion to deny the request.
Okay, do we have any of the questions or comments from the board? Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
Madam Chair, I am a loss as to why this is coming before the board as it is, and I went to the Red Fork meeting, and I understand that a board prior to us, a long time ago, I'm not sure if I recall back now, made it possible for these types of presentations to be made to the board, and I would like for our attorney to put forth the resolution for this board to consider at the next meeting, that these types of matters stay in the Tax Commissioner's office. He has the information, he has the, he has the history, he knows if he's tried to work out plans, he understands the financials behind it, and I don't think that our meeting should be lined up with people coming before the board, as Commissioner Barnes stated, to ask us to make a decision on the spot about something we don't know all the history on. So, I just wanted to say tonight, I'd like to see our attorney at our next meeting, put forth the resolution, that matters concerning taxes in any form or fashion, should stay in the hands of our Tax Commissioner, who we have charged and empowered to look at what needs to take place for this county, and let him determine how to make these decisions, because I would not wanna make a decision about anybody's household without knowing the history and information behind it, where they can sit down with his office, he can pull it back from nineteen-ten, going forward to talk about what has happened and what should take place. So those are just my comments, and I'd like to see that resolution come before this board of Commissioners, so that we can empower him to do his job, and not look for another one, and another one, and another one, as Commissioner Barnes said, for us to consider.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sure our county attorney is duly noting, and obviously, our county clerk is gonna note it as the request for the next agenda, so thank you very much, okay? Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, CN nine, the floor is now open for the motion. Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, Madam Chair, I make a motion to deny the request.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? I see Commissioner Wilson as a second. Any further discussion, comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, just to clarify, anyone oppose? Okay, that was a unanimous vote, thank you. Okay, well, now moving to the planning and zoning section of our agenda, and as previously stated, when the amended was agenda, the agenda was amended. The public hearing, COMP AM two oh dash oh two, which was a request to amend the future land use map in District Two, regarding the property located south of Highway twenty west and east of Simpson Mill Road, has been postponed, as well as the next item, which was a public hearing, RZ dash two oh dash oh three by ARP Holdings, requesting a rezoning from office institutional to general commercial for property located south of Highway twenty west and east of Simpson Mill Road in District Two, that too has been postponed. So we will now move into the, the item, RZ two oh dash oh four, which is also a public hearing with TRG at Highway one fifty-five, this is in District, this is TRG Highway one fifty-five Investors in District Three, which is requesting a rezoning from residential agriculture to single-family resident, which is currently a, our residential agriculture and single-family resident is being requested to be rezoned to residential suburban, for the properties located west of Highway one fifty-five north and north of Town Square Drive. So we'll invite up Mr. Stacy Jordan-Rudisil for the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening Commissioners, we can go to the next slide. The item before you tonight is located on Highway one fifty-five north. You can see that the properties to the rear of our subject, to the north, to the south, and also somewhat to the east, are already developed with single-family residential development. On our next slide, if we can move forward, we're gonna look at our zoning map, which also includes the city limits of McDonough, that's in green. The future land use map that we're looking at at this time, this peach colored, it indicates a medium-density residential land use designation of up to six dwelling units per acre net. The applicant's request is for five point eight five dwelling units per acre net. This site plan that we're looking at shows an RS development. The, the first part of this subject property, just to the west of Highway one fifty-five, is showing single-family lots. We're looking at one hundred and seven of these single-family lots. It's rather unusual, but this subject property happens to have two frontages on Highway one fifty-five, with a proposed entrance at each, in conformance with our ULDC requirements. To the rear of the subject property, to the west, you can see in orange and also yellow, a couple of pods which are attached product, residential products, these are townhome products. This entire RS development is intended to be gated, and the entire project is intended to be targeted to seniors. So we're looking at a proposed senior living establishment. The area to the west, to the rear of the property, is over a stream crossing, because they're proposing ninety-eight of these dwelling units over the one single stream crossing, there is a proposal for an emergency entrance to the Huntington Ridge subdivision to the west. This site plan doesn't show strict compliance with code requirements, especially the highway corridor over Lake District in which it is located. Steph has evaluated the applicant's request, if we can take a look at the next slide, please. So we've noted certain things, the property is comprised of over seventy acres of total area, we are looking at over twenty acres of floodplain. It's interesting, and we think that it's a good proposal, that there's a thirty-foot buffer surrounding periphery of the subject property. We've noted the future land use map designation, which supports the applicant's request, and on the next slide, we'll be, we'll take a look at the zoning advisory board's recommendation of approval for the subject property, and the zoning advisory board did recommend approval with twelve conditions, and so there are several sl- conditions. And so there are several slides that illustrate the Zoning Advisory Board's recommended conditions. So these conditions typically have to do with traffic impact studies, entrances, minimum requirements, garages, and so forth. Also, we have two or three conditions that require this development to be senior living. Madam Chair, I'd be pleased to answer questions.
Okay, thank you. So at this time, I can, we can, okay, thank you, IT team. So at this time, are there any questions or comments before we begin a public hearing for this matter? Commissioner Barn, so you unmute.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to wait for that to the public hearing, and I'll have some questions and some additional conditions as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So since this is a virtual meeting, I do understand that we will give each group, those who want to speak in favor, an opportunity to come forward for a group of 10 minutes as a collective group, and then those who wish to speak in opposition. And since this is a virtual meeting, I'll turn to the county clerk or someone from the planning and zoning team to identify if anyone did sign up to speak in favor of at this time, and they will be granted 10 minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Steve Moore, and I'm here representing the applicant, the Reservoir Group, on this request for you this evening. I will do my best to share my screen. Well, Chair, there we go. Okay. So this is, as Stacy communicated, a lot of these details, but I'll just run through it real quick with you. The subject property is on Highway 155 North. This is the Huntington Ridge subdivision that he had referenced in his presentation, 70 acres, a portion of which is already zoned R3 to the south, with the balance being zoned RA. We are requesting to rezone this property to RS for the purpose of an age-targeted residential community. As Stacy mentioned, we are proposing two entrances to to Highway 155 that are shown here and here, both of which will be gated. This entrance that he was mentioning before is an existing entrance that is stubbed out to the property. And the idea is to connect to that for emergency purposes only. There's also a Georgia Power easement that runs approximately through here. You can see through the aerial where that is. That gate would also serve as access to Georgia Power crews to maintain their their assets within that easement. The, this gate here would be a locked gate with some type of Knox box lock that was only accessible to those authorized personnel, be it emergency personnel or Georgia Power personnel. The layout currently does consist, as Stacy mentioned, our original application does include a single family here with what we called senior cottages in the back. The idea is to provide a age-targeted community that is, we believe, a very much-needed service area for the county. This is a rendering of the original or of the entrance, the gated entrances that we propose along the two accesses to 155. Our plan, as I mentioned originally, does comprise of two uses, that 107 single-family lots and the 91 senior cottages. There was a lot of concerns voiced during the zoning advisory board hearing from citizens, and we've received several subsequent phone calls from concerned residents and citizens in the area about the senior cottage component. They are attached. We do believe that there is a need for that, but understanding that there was some concern about that, the applicant has agreed that if this board sees fit, that we would convert this area from the senior cottages to more of the single-family lots that you see here. It would essentially be an extension across the creek to basically have the same size lots, the same type of product that is here. We believe, hope, we hope that that at least satisfies satisfied some of those concerns with that with regards to the attached products. This site does have a significant amount of space, approximately 30 acres of open space. As you can see here, it is, serves as protection of the existing streams and floodplain in the area. And also, and is a majority of it is usable, which could be used as passive recreation areas for the residents and community. All of that open space connects to an amenity center here that will, again, be, the amenities will be oriented as well as the the whole design of the subdivision to seniors for those uses that are compatible for them. This is a representative streetscape of what we envision this project to look like. This is actually taken from a project that is in Peachtree City called Crest Winds, which is a a senior project, but very similar architecturally, very similar layout, very similar in all aspects of everything from street trees to landscaping, even the architectural controls that are proposed within that project. We understand that that staff has recommended approval and that there are a current 12 conditions being proposed. We are in agreement with all of those conditions. We've actually already complied with a majority of or some of those conditions, especially with regards to 155. We have studied those two intersections. We haven't done a full traffic study, but we have confirmed that site distance works at those two intersections. And we've been in discussions with Georgia Department of Transportation regarding those two, those two accesses. Our future land use map designation, as Stacy mentioned, we comply with that. Obviously, with the reduction of the townhomes and conversion to single family, that's going to further reduce our density to be significantly less than what the future land use map actually allows, which is up to six units to the acre. We believe the project is perfectly suited geographically, topographically, all of those aspects to meet a vision and a real need that the county has. And we believe this is the right site. We believe it's the right layout. And with that, that I believe covers my presentation, and I'll look forward to answering questions when they come up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I cannot see the clock, so I don't know if there's still time remaining within that 10-minute slot or not. So.
We have, it's at 6:33, but I don't believe anybody else has signed up to speak in favor.
Okay, all right.
We can move to the opposed.
Thank you. Okay. So at this time now, we will welcome anyone wishing to speak in opposition. And again, the the group of individuals wishing to speak in opposition will be granted 10 minutes as well. So if you'll help us navigate through that, we sure would appreciate it. Thank you.
The first speaker is Eddie Smith, and I believe he is on.
Welcome this evening, Mr. Smith. Are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, well, you may begin, sir. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can now.
Fantastic. I had a little trouble there. Well, really, my comments are just as a follow-up to Madam Chairman, to an email that I sent all the Commissioners. And it was really centered around two of the points that I brought out. First of all, my name is Eddie Smith. I live at 90 Ben Horton Drive. I'm right across the street from the development. The first thing that came to mind when, as we kind of went through all of this, is that there are 623 homes already in seven tenths of a mile on 155. And so the the advent of having 91 apartments, which in my opinion would generate a lot more traffic, obviously was a concern for myself and a lot of the others who live in Ben Horton. The second, the most pressing one, had to do with the development as being a targeted facility as opposed to an age-restricted community. Is is my understanding that Pinnacle Point is an age-restricted development. And age-restricted has a lot of connotations, both legally and things of the HOA and all those kind of things. So it it seemed to be a better suited a type of environment for what is being targeted as an age-restricted community. So age-restricted, to me, is more of a marketing point. Age-restricted has some legal connotations. So as far as myself is concerned, and several others in that corridor, we have, we are in opposition of it based off of those two ramifications.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, do we have any additional comments in opposition?
The next speaker, we have two more, Mary Cobb's and Reed Birch. Mary Cobb should be on there next.
Okay. Well, good evening, Ms. Cobb's.
Good evening, Madam Chair and County Commissioners. I've been a resident of Pinnacle Point for 15 years now. And I've been on a member of the board for two years. I'm speaking on behalf of the Board of the Homeowners Association of Pinnacle Point in opposition to this development. In this portion of State Route 155, where the developer is proposing two new entrances, there are already five subdivision entrances in the space of about three tenths of a mile. Bristol Park, Pinnacle Point, Ashley Oaks, Heritage Town Square, and Ben Horton Development. In non-pandemic times, we were already having difficulty entering and exiting Pinnacle Point at peak traffic times with almost double the number of residents that now live in Pinnacle Point. The new development will almost certainly make it perilous just to try to go out and go to the grocery store. I don't understand why a traffic study that the developer has mentioned so casually hasn't been done, hasn't been made a requirement before this subdivision has come to a vote for approval or disapproval. I mean, how do you know the true impact of the increased traffic that this development will have? Our other opposition was to the spot zone, what we really view as spot zoning in the residential suburban designation as just being another backdoor way to spot zone apartment buildings in the middle of existing single-family zoning. At least it seems that way to us. We didn't move here to live in a high-density, high-traffic area that often comes with apartment living. So I'm very glad to hear that the developer would consider now, single-family homes as opposed to the so-called townhomes, which really were apartments. We do have some concerns also about the floodplain and the impact on Pinnacle Point that further development above us on Camp Creek will have on our homes here. We already have a number of empty lots that will never be developed in Pinnacle Point because the designation of a flood zone apparently changed from the time the subdivision was first built. These vacant lots are now a burden on the community to maintain these lots. They were purchased by a developer who long ago dissolved, an out-of-state corporation that owned these lots, and long ago abandoned the lots. We've been told by the city of McDonough, it's unlikely these particular lots in the flood zone will ever be developed. We have residents in Pinnacle Point who now, whose basements have been flooded, their property destroyed, their landscaping ruined, all as a result of having their land partially on the flood zone. Yet this new development contains even larger portions of land than the designated flood flood zone area. Has there any been real study done as to what these changes will amount to us downstream? And we also had the same concerns that the gentleman before me just mentioned, the designation of age-targeted as opposed to age-restricted. Age-restricted means by law that 80% of the dwellings must have at least one member over 55 in the household. Any further restrictions are those imposed by the individual HOAs. I would suggest that the age-targeting designation was made to help the development be more palatable to the county. But in fact, the designation gives the developer more wiggle room to make sale to anybody of any age that'll make a profit for him. So even if age-targeting marketing is used initially, there's nothing to prevent owners on down the line to resell to younger people, rent to others who are younger as well. For these reasons and others, we oppose this new development.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cobb's. Okay, and I think we have one other individual who will come forward now.
We actually have one more individual, Reed Birch, and then there is another person in the waiting room that did not specify which planning and zoning case they would like to speak at. His name is Mark Stevens. So if we have time left and James can move him over as well, we'll check with him.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening, Mr. Birch.
Hello, my name is Reed Birch. I own two properties on the Ben Horton Drive, 140 and 186. I will echo actually what the last two speakers said about age-restricted versus age-targeted. I would very much appreciate consideration for the age restriction being put on this development. Also, the removal of the townhomes, converting those to single family is also, that would be a really good thing, in my opinion, if that's under consideration. We have a lot of concerns about the townhomes, especially with the the talk of the last meeting that I attended, where these could potentially be rental community. And the last thing that I have here is is just clarification on the on the emergency access gate on the west side of this development. Just making sure that that it's addressed, that this is, this has no pedestrian access. There's, there's a concern that I have and several people I've talked to that that this community would become a corridor linking Highway 42 with Highway 155 for pedestrian traffic. And I'm just making sure that that would, that would not be a concern, or that would be addressed in the in the restrictions here.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Birch. Okay, and then we have one more that we clarify if he's speaking on this zoning matter.
James, if you could move Mark Stevens over, we'll check with him.
There, there is no Mark Stevens in the waiting room.
Okay. He must have been signed up for another meeting then. That is all, Chair.
Okay, well, this does conclude the public hearing aspect of it. And so at this time now, we'll entertain any questions or comments from the board. I see Commissioner Barn motioning to unmute.
Thank you, Chair. I had a couple of questions about some additional conditions that Stacy and I had discussed. And first of all, I want to thank two thoughts, Stacy and Drew and Steve and the citizens for reaching out to me. And I think we've addressed all the issues, and I think when you hear all the conditions, you'll be relieved. But I did want to ask you, Stacy, one of the conditions, it says it in here, but should that, the gated community and private street, should that be part of the conditions as well, or are we covered?
So Commissioner, if it's the intent to be sure to have private street and to have the the gates, that we would recommend that that be a condition of zoning.
Okay, okay. That's, that's all I got right now. Thank you.
Okay, were there any responses to some of the comments that came up from the those that spoke during the comment section, especially? from those that spoke during the comment section, especially regarding the targeted designation and all? Commissioner Barn?
It's going to be an added condition.
Okay, are we going to go through those added conditions?
Yes, we can do that. Stacy, will you show the 12 existing conditions?
Yes, sir. So if we could go back to the presentation, because there were 12, there are three screens that show the conditions for this property.
Okay.
Yes, we can move forward. And then one more.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Do you want me to read these additional conditions now, or do you want me to put it in my form of motions?
It would be good to read those. I know they were shown on the screen. So it doesn't matter if someone, I think it would be great to have those read into the minutes, even though we are showing it for people that may need to hear it. So if we can just go through those 12 and then you can make your motion.
Okay. With the 12 conditions, this is under additional conditions. The first one says, "A restrictive covenant shall be recorded with the Superior Court providing enforcement of the age-targeted requirements. A copy of the recorded restrictive covenant shall be provided to the Henry County Building and Plan Review Department before final plan approval," as condition one of the new ones. Number two, "A six-foot vinyl-coated black chain-link fence shall be provided and maintained along the western property line where the develop is proposed, with also a chain-link gate." The next condition, "A five-foot sidewalk shall be provided along both sides of the interior subdivision in accordance with the current utility placement requirements. In addition, a five-foot sidewalk shall be provided along the property frontage of Highway 155 to be consistent in size and location with the proposed sidewalk extension project proposed by the city of McDonough." The next condition, "Decorative streetlights shall be provided in accordance with the utility provider location specification. Lights shall satisfy any requirements for pedestrian lighting shall be provided along new streets as well as along the property frontage of 155. Lights shall be acorn-style or similar as available through the electric provider." The next condition, "Street trees shall be required along the interior streets. A master landscape plan for the community, including location, size, and species of street trees, shall be approved by the Building and Plan Review Department prior to final subdivision plan approval. Installation landscaping, including street trees and sidewalks associated with each lot, shall be installed as part of the residential house construction and shall count toward the minimum landscape requirements for each house. The remainder of the landscaping requirements for each lot shall be in accordance with the current residential building code." The next condition, "All units shall be single-family and no townhomes." Number seven, "This will be a gated community with private streets." And that's it, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions or comments further? Okay, seeing none, we will now open the floor for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Okay, and again, that's the motion to approve with the conditions that Stacy and Mr. Birch just said.
The 12 conditions and the additional conditions I just spoke about.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, there's a motion, I see a second from Commissioner Holmes. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, any opposed? Again, I didn't see all hands raised. So, okay, so I assume that was unanimous. Any opposed? Okay, that was a unanimous decision. All right, well, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move into the Board of Commissioners items. Again, what we'll do now is invite up the T-Splas Resolution Conversation and invite up, seems like our County Manager, Ms. Sherry Hobson Matthews, for that presentation.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. Mr. Kirk is actually going to do the presentation. But earlier this afternoon, I did send a request to the Board requesting that this item be tabled or removed from the agenda as we were trying to get in front of getting it prepared for the ballot in March. One of the things that the Board talked to us about when we initially brought this resolution was that there was some concern with it being on the March ballot, but also to make sure that we had the SDS approved on all ends by the cities. We have yet to get a finalized SDS confirmation from the four cities, and so we didn't want to bring it back to you all in light of that information not being provided as directed by the Board. But the Board did elect to go ahead and want to proceed with the resolution, and so that was the reason behind us wanting to have it removed from the agenda. Mr., which is a very short resolution, which will just give us direction on whether we need to proceed with it being on the March agenda or if there is some more direction from the Board in terms of when we need to bring this back. We're just trying to make sure that we're prepared because the T-Splas process is a very lengthy process, but it starts with us having to get the cities at the table to have a conversation. So Mr. Kirk will do a quick presentation, and then if there are any questions that any members of the Board may have, either myself or Mr. Kirk will be more than happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Kirk.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, and the Vice Chair, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am. So originally, we had planned on having a T-Splas referendum in November of this year. Unfortunately, that had to be postponed, so as County Manager mentioned, we wanted to see what the appetite was at the Board to move forward in the March 2021 potential election or if we wanted to wait till a later date. And that's all the referendum really speaks to, is giving us the direction, which way you guys want to go.
Okay, thank you. So are there any questions or comments from the Board? Okay, seeing none, the floor is now, okay, Commissioner Thomas.
I'm not sure, I would like to see this moved to the November elections instead of the March election. We have more people engaged in the election process in November than we do in March.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I have a question. So just as a point of information, I do agree with Commissioner Thomas that it should not be on the March ballot, but is the East Plas going to be on the March ballot? Did we ever find out that information?
We have not confirmed.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments from the Board? Commissioner Clemens?
That was one of the things that I asked for several months ago from county staff, is to find out about the East Plas and if the school system was doing their East Plas to let us know so that we could kind of coincide with them. It's better served by having a lot of people pushing together for the Splos and just one organization.
And Commissioner Clemens, we are trying to get that information. I think the Board of Education obviously is trying to navigate through what impact COVID is going to have in terms of East Plas and the appetite for it. So as soon as we are able to get a confirmation from the school board, we'll definitely report back. You're right, that is also another reason why we wanted to hold off on doing anything until we have all of the answers for you all in terms of East Plas. But at this point, we have not received confirmation on whether East Plas will be on the March ballot.
Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
But what I'm saying, Chair, is that we still should be going with the procedure of trying to figure out what road on T-Splas, still having the plan, everything that we would need to do for time, instead of waiting to decide, and then we have two or three months. We should be working with the cities, we should still be getting those lists together. We still need to be having conversations with our departments about what we need to do so that when we're ready, we're ready. If it's March or it's November, we still need to be working towards it.
So Commissioner Clemens, I heard part of what you said, but I think the latter part was we should still be working, and we are doing that. We have already developed a project list, and all this resolution would do is give us guidance on whether we need to go ahead and call the meeting that's going to be required, that we have to have with the cities. If it's the desire of the Board not to proceed with this being on the March ballot, then that's fine. We're going to continue working on our end, and that's what we've continued to do. So yes, we are continuing to work. We just need to know when we need to call the meeting of the cities. That's the whole point of this resolution this evening.
All right, any other questions or comments? I've got one question. Go ahead, Commissioner Barn.
So have you had a conversation with the Board of Education? We just hadn't got that part.
There has been conversations, but nothing has been defined at this point in terms of whether they want to proceed with doing an educational Splos. I do know that the Board of Education typically tries to do theirs a year prior to it expiring, and so this would be their year that they're doing it. But as I've mentioned, they too are having to navigate through budget expenditures and whether the timing is right to introduce a continuation of their educational Splos during this pandemic. And so at this point, I will reach out to the Superintendent tomorrow and see if she has any guidance. But I have heard from various sources that there's been some conversations, but nothing has been determined at this point.
Thank you. I think it's very important for us to have it at the same time they're having ours. This would be a big plus for us. Thank you.
No problem.
And my question relates how, has the Transportation Group met yet? The citizen-involved Transportation Group met yet? Or where are we in that process? Because I think it would be great to include them in this process as well.
Mr. Baker actually asked for all of the appointments to be made by the end of September, and then he would start having the meetings at the first quarter of October. At this time, I think we've had at least two or three Commissioners that have made appointments to the Transportation Committee, and we're still waiting on the remaining Commissioners to make those appointments. So we do need to go ahead as soon as possible and get those names submitted to the county court so that we can go ahead and get the meeting scheduled for October.
Okay, thank you. All right, again, the floor, any other questions or comments from the Board? All right, now the floor is now open for a motion. Commissioner Thomas? Okay, you're muted.
I'd like to make the motion that administration or management continue to work on the processes that's needed to bring forth a T-Splash to the public and with the target date of being on the ballot in November.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, see Commissioner Clemens has a second. Any further discussion or comments? Let's see, Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Barn. Commissioner Wilson?
So with that motion, we have to follow up with the Board of Education and make sure that they, when they're going to do theirs, that needs to be added. So if they're going to do theirs in March, we should probably follow along with them, not divide them up and go in November. So that's something we need to consider.
Okay, Commissioner Barn, your question or comment?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Wilson. I really like to tag team with the Board of Education on this, if we can. You're talking about November next year, you're not talking about this year.
Well, I think that has been answered, definitely, not November of this year. So Commissioner Thomas, I'll go back to you. You made the motion originally to make it in November. Did you want to consider the comments that were just made?
November 2021, not this year. And of course, working with the Board of Education to determine when theirs will be calendared as well.
So I just want to clarify your motion, Commissioner Thomas, that you're saying November 2021. However, if the Board of Education chooses in March, would be considered. I just want to make sure your motion is clear.
We are, I am not considering March at all because you don't get very good turnout. I'm simply, our target date should be November 2021, and we should be in conversation with the Board of Education to ask them to join us for that time period of November 2021. But in the meantime, continue to work toward whatever's necessary in meetings and paperwork to make this happen and bring it back before the Board.
Okay, thank you. So the motion is regarding November 2021, with staff continuing to move forward in preparations for a T-Splas. So we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? All in favor of that motion, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, again, signal by raising your hand. Okay, it seems like that's four. Any opposed? Two, okay, so that resolution passes with a T-Splas consideration in November 2021, with staff continuing to move forward. Okay, all right, well, thank you. All right, we'll now move into the next item, which is a presentation regarding the judicial positions, and we'll invite again the County Manager for that presentation. And then afterwards, we'll allow our District Attorney, Darius Patillo, for five minutes to speak as well.
Good evening, Chair and Board members. Again, this evening, I am following up on a request from members of the Board as a result of a request from the District Attorney during the September 1st Board meeting. If the Board members will recall, there was a lengthy discussion regarding a request from the DA specifically to fund three positions within his respective department. As a result of that request, there was a lot of dialogue amongst the Board specifically on what impact the request would have, what are the needs of other departments within the judicial system, and what the process was in terms of the budget. And so I've tried to answer those questions within the presentation. Additionally, there also was a request from a Commissioner regarding what the cost would be to fund these respective positions within the District Attorney's budget, and so I've included all of that within the presentation. Next slide, please. So this evening, I will go through the budget process history, the pre-COVID presentation for our budget, the post-COVID-19 presentation, which was on March 19th, where we stand, moving forward, and then recommendations. Just as a recap, on January 7th of this year, all of the Board members, including our elected officials, our constitutionals, and our department heads, received a budget calendar. The calendar indicated what the process would be for our budget meetings, and specifically, it afforded each department an opportunity to present to the Commissioners what their requests were for the upcoming fiscal year. If you'll note specifically, we did have a BOC briefing with elected officials on February 25th, 2020, and then on March 10th, we had one of many budget workshops specifically with the Board to go over the request and the initial recommendations from staff. On March 19th, we had our first public hearing in which we talked, or May 19th, I'm sorry, we had our first public hearing in which we talked through what those recommendations were going to look like in light of COVID. And then on March 30th, we published a notice, and then this Board adopted its fiscal year '21 budget with a provision in the resolution that we would bring back to the Board for consideration, an amendment to the budget in January 2021, after we had an opportunity to determine where we would be as a county as it relates to our COVID-19 expenses and impact that COVID may have on our county budget. Next slide, please. So during the budget presentation on March 10th, each Board member received this presentation. It was a very lengthy presentation, but in the presentation, and again, this was pre-COVID-19, there were a list of excluded positions that were not being recommended within the budget. If you'll note, there were positions within the Building Department, Public Information, Planning and Zoning, Tax Assessors, Fire Department, State Court, and Recreation Parks. Specifically, there were also three positions within the District Attorney's office that were not being recommended. What in both positions, two were for gang homicide, Assistant DA, and investigator, and then a Crimes Against Children Attorney Four that had not been recommended by staff in the initial March 10th budget presentation. Next slide. So on May 19th, we were knee-deep into COVID. At that point, this was obviously a lot of uncertainty. So on May 19th, we were knee deep into COVID. At that point, this was obviously a lot of uncertainty. We knew that we had to set our budget, but we also understood that we didn't realize the impact that COVID would have. One of the things that we heard loud and clear from the board is that we wanted to maintain our current level of service that we were providing to our residents. And that we definitely needed to come back and revisit our budget in January. Because we would have a better handle on where we were going to be from not only a revenue standpoint, but from an expense standpoint as well. If the board will remember, we actually reduced the budget back to the 167,943. And we committed to holding every department at their levels based on what we did in mid-year. Some of the highlights of the budget is we were going to focus on investing in the fourth judgeship and necessary courthouse maintenance. At that time, we had not received notification from the state on whether the fourth judgeship would be awarded. But we had a understanding that it was going to be approved and that we would need to have those positions funded for January 2021. We subsequently received information that we no longer needed to have it funded for 2021 or for January 2022. We did go ahead and include that in the budget. And then specifically, some courthouse maintenance and issues that had been brought to the board attention, those items were included in the budget. Again, the fund, we funded our defined benefit plan. And then the board did elect to maintain the employee benefits at affordable levels for all of our employees. Next slide. On June 16th, we did adopt the budget of 167,943. And again, this budget was set as a precursor to what impact COVID would have. As a reminder, COVID kicked off in March. We had no idea that COVID was going to hit, nor did we understand the impact that it was going to have. Now, we specifically, I know a number of the board members wanted to speak specifically regarding the district attorney's budget. And during the budget meeting on the first, there was a lot of conversation regarding the district attorney's budget. And specifically, there not being a increase, or at least there not being requests granted within that specific unit. We did go back and pull just what the DA's budget has been over the last six years. And as of 2016, the DA's budget has increased by 75%. And that's important because the actual spending has only increased by 32%. Meaning that although we've increased the budget, the expenditures have not been at the same level. And what that means is we're trying to make sure that we hold every department to the expenses that they are expending. If you'll recall, for the last three years, we have made a concerted effort to make sure that we are not over budgeting departments. And that's how we've been able to not depend on fund balance to balance our budget. But to make sure that departments are spending within their budgets. One of the things that we've really stressed to each department is that you manage your department. And within your respective department unit, if the funds are available, that's how you spend within your budget. One of the other things that we've looked at is for fiscal year 2021. We are only projecting that we will spend about 75% of the approved budget. Again, January 2022, we were estimated to spend approximately $2 million to cover the impact of the fourth judgeship of all, on all of the courts. Which will include additional positions, not only at the superior court level, but for all of the other departments that provide support to those courts, including the district attorney. Next slide. So one of the things that we have recommended to each department is that we need for them to stay within their budgets until the November, December, January timeframe. We are looking at any actions and mitigation measures that we can do to make sure that we don't have any shortfalls. Including a hiring freeze for non-public safety positions, additional review and approval of seasonal hires. And we have halted purchases of non-essential supplies and services. I don't know how many board members have followed, but Douglas County has actually entered into a furlough, in which they are actually furloughing. Public safety employees and some of their employees as well. And we don't want to get to that point because we just don't know. Other actions include funding within your currently approved budget to maintain ongoing objectives of the board until January 2021. And then a continual review of expenditures over the fall. Again, we are committed to invest in our employees and plan to avoid any layoffs or furloughs by further reductions, which may be considered if the projected revenue shortfall is more severe. One of the other things, and again, we will continue operating within the use of, without the use of any fund balance. Next slide, please. So before I get to the final slide, one of the other questions that was posed specifically is what impact would the DA's three positions have on the budget? If there is a desire for the DA to proceed with these positions. Again, there are funds available within each department's budget. We just kicked off our July 1 fiscal year. And so we are fairly new into this budget cycle. The cost of those three new positions would be approximately $250,273. And again, that is if those positions were in place as of October 5th. Keep in mind, that would not be for a full year. That's just with those individuals being hired on as of October 5th. Now, the challenge with adding the three new positions is that the funds are currently available within the DA's respective budget. In the event that our revenues don't come in as projected, next year, we will have to determine if we're going to reduce the budget to account for those positions. Or if we will have to reduce other departments' budgets to account for any increases throughout this fiscal year. That is one of the reasons why we were looking to bring back to the board, or at least kick off our FY 2021 budget conversations in October. And then bring back to the board a mid-year adjustment in February for those departments that did have requests that were not granted during the initial budget approval. And so again, this evening, the request of the board is to determine, one, if funds are available for the positions. Yes, funds are available within the district attorney's budget. But again, those are positions that will now be a part of his budget that you all have already set forth. Staff is not recommending that any additional funds be added within the respective department. Because we trust that each department can manage and maintain the budget in which they've been given. I think one of the other critical points is that we have been able to determine that departments are not expending the funds that they've asked for within their respective budgets. Which is why it's important for us to continue to maintain and to review those budgets and make sure that we're not over projecting within the respective departments. At this time, I'll yield for any questions that the board may have.
Okay, we thank you for that presentation. Let's see if there are any questions or comments. Okay, Commissioner, just seeing his hand raised.
Sure. I really didn't understand the presentation. The DA came to us last regularly scheduled meeting. And specifically asked for us to fund three positions. Three positions that would help protect our community against criminals. And so I think we should leave the request right there and not try to drag in all these other obstacles. To get the board to say, hey, you know what? The DA doesn't need these positions. We don't, we don't need to fund this office, but this is an office that needs to be funded. It's a critical part of keeping our citizens safe. So if we can just keep this real simple. And provide the DA's office with the resources he needs so he can prosecute crime. That's what we need to leave it and we need to vote on just that resolution.
All right, other comments from the board members. Commissioner Barham.
Sherry, if I heard you correctly, these funds for these positions are already in the DA's budget. So why are we even discussing this?
So Commissioner Barham, that was the whole point of the presentation. To explain to the board that we are, we kicked off our FY 21 budget in July. Here it is, we're in September now. So we're about two and a half, two and a half months into the budget. Based on the spending habits of the DA's office. Even the last fiscal year, he returned almost $232,000 back to fund balance because those funds were not expended. I think what should have happened is the request should have come through the county manager's office. We would have told him, hey, those funds are available within your respective budget. And then he could have proceeded accordingly if there was a dire need to get those positions funded. Again, the request came to the board and at that time, I was not prepared to give that information to the board. We've since researched it and determined that there will be funds available. But keep in mind that if we have to reduce our budget from the current 167. If we come back in January and show that our revenues are not where they need to be, or our expenditures are not where they need to be, then we will have a problem. What I want the board to also understand is that our expenses are up, although our revenues are down. And so we are spending a lot more because of things unintended, COVID expenses, unintended. Expenses that may have been approved by the board, things that we've got to move forward with. And so while we have a mechanism to fund the positions for this fiscal year. In the event that we have to reduce the budget for next year, or we have to, the board decides, hey, I want to see a 5% cut across the board. There's a likelihood that we will have to cut those positions. And so I don't want to be in a position to hire those positions and then have to cut them or cut other places to ensure that those positions remain in place.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson, and did I see Commissioner Clemens? And then I've got a question. I may hold mine to after the DA speaks. Okay. Commissioner, let's see, Commissioner Barham, were you done? I'm sorry.
Well, no, I wasn't quite done.
I'm sorry.
I don't know why the DA can't move, go ahead and move forward if he wants to without having us to vote on anything. He's got the money in the budget. Go ahead and do it and we'll deal with it when the budget time comes. And you know, I don't know how much they're doing at the court system right now. It's my understanding, they've been shut down since March of last year. And that's all I've got to say right now. Thank you.
Okay, we go to Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Clemens and Commissioner Thomas. Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
Sherry, the question is, has the DA sat down with you in the last six weeks and talked about these three positions?
No, sir.
No.
Okay. That's all.
Commissioner Clemens.
Sherry, you have mentioned several times about the unexpected COVID expenses. We have millions of dollars that have been accounted and reimbursed COVID expenses. So I want to make sure that we don't use the COVID expenses as the reason, not the things that we're supposed to fund as a. The other thing is, I want to make sure the monies that we don't spend for the The businesses or the nonprofits, funds can go back into our budget. And I think the commissioners need to know that. Not only can those funds go back into our budget. Just like we use those funds to help businesses retain their employees, we can also use those funds to help retain our employees. We don't have to give out all the money if you're saying that we may have a crisis and we may need some money. So just be mindful to utilize those funds the way we need to utilize those funds so that we're not in the position of having to furlough and lay off.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Clemens? Okay, Commissioner Thomas.
First of all, before I make my comments, I would like to hear Ms. Matthew's comments in relation to what Commissioner Clemens just stated. Are those funds being able to go back into fund balance as she stated?
So Commissioner Thomas, the funds that we are utilizing for small businesses and nonprofits are fund balanced dollars. Fund balanced dollars should be used for emergency purposes only and one-time expenditures. So in this case, those funds would not be funds that we would allocate for positions because positions are ongoing. That's every year. So even if we pulled out a fund balance this year, you've got to have it in the budget for next year. And so there's, there's definitely, that is not the approach that we ever take for positions. Now, for emergency purchases, for emergency expenditures, for one-time expenditures, yes ma'am. We absolutely utilize the fund balance. Now, if it's the will of the board to do something else, then obviously the board can do that. But I certainly would not recommend utilizing fund balance for positions. And I think that was one of the things I was really clear about during the budget meeting earlier this month. That we did not need to use fund balance to fund positions. And that's not just for the DA, that's for anything. We have gotten out of utilizing fund balance for such purposes. Because we realized that those are not one-time expenses. And it's great to know that we have funds available in fund balance. But if we add 10 or 12 positions or one or two new positions, those new positions will then roll into your general fund in which you have to fund. And that again, would be expenses that were not budgeted initially when we adopted our budget.
Okay, so what you're basically saying, dollars do go back into fund balance. Even though the process may be something we need to consider, the dollars go back into fund balance. That's a yes, correct?
The funds that were allocated for the small business and nonprofit goes back into fund balance. That is correct.
That's all I asked. I wanted to make sure. Now, the process by which we use them is something the board has to consider. That's what I wanted to clarify. I think that's what Commissioner Clemens was trying to make sure that we are aware of. Now, the second thing is, you gave us a summary over six years. Showing that the DA office has received an increase of 75% over six years. I don't think Mr. Patello's been in position six years. So these budgets are not reflective of his management of how he's used those dollars. So that's a little bit misleading to me. I want to know really one thing. What was the budget in 2019? And what was he assigned in 2020? Was there an increase to his department from 2019 to 2020? I don't want a summarized look of what has happened over six years. We're talking about now. Did he receive an increase from the budget from 2019 to 2020?
No, ma'am, because for Commissioner Thomas, we held every department at their same budget from 2019 to 2020. And the only reason I gave the six-year analysis was because there was a comment made during the board meeting. That every year that the DA has come forward for a budget request, his request has been denied. The DA took on it in 2017. And so I apologize if I gave you 2016, which was a year earlier. But 2017 to present, every year, there has been an increase with the exception of 2019 to 2020.
There was no increase from 2019 to 2020. That's the time period that I have been involved in, and that's what I'm looking at. From 2019 to 2020, there's been no increase. Second thing is, pre-COVID, these three positions were approved prior to COVID. It was in the budget to have these three positions approved, and those dollars were approved. And we were assuming that he got these dollars as stated by Commissioner Holmes to protect the community prior to COVID. Now, you're stating that because of COVID, he was also a part of the group that had positions that not funded. Well, I'm concerned about that. Because his positions are very important to the safety of this community. But we have hired other people doing COVID, after COVID, and hired these people, which we could wait on. And I won't list them, but we have hired people in management positions. That we could have waited on and not hired and make sure our community had positions that were That will make sure our community was safe and that he had what he needed to work with. So I don't want to start talking about that we put all departments in a position of being held. Because some hiring did take place. And I met them. So now what I do want to talk about is one thing. We thought that we had given the DA those three positions, not five, but three. We thought in his budget that was there. Because public safety has been one of the key things that this board has definitely supported. We supported it and made that known when we approved 20 officers into a budget. When there was a request for 10, we approved 20. We wanted to make the statement to the public that public safety is dear and very important to this board. Now, we also know during COVID, across the nation, crime has increased. Specifically in domestic violence, specifically against children, because they're spending more time with their abusers. And those are the areas that he's asking for, those particular areas, domestic crimes, crimes against families, and crimes against children. Now, you also stated, he has some money already in his budget. He has money in his budget that he can move around, basically. We're saying that we want to fund those positions that were approved prior to COVID. Because we approved them for the need of this county. Not because other people's budgets were frozen, not because they were lumped into, the janitorial budgets were frozen. This is something dear to this board, health, safety, and welfare of this county. And if he did not receive any increase from 2019 to 2020, I'm looking for those three positions to be funded. That's what I'm looking for.
So Commissioner Thomas, with all due respect, I want to provide some clarification on a couple of things. I don't know why there was a misunderstanding on those positions being approved. Because I just showed you all the March 10th presentation, which was pre-COVID. That specifically said excluded positions, district attorney in the three positions. So if there was a desire for the board for those positions to be included, at that time, the board should have said, hey, I object to those. at that time, the board should have said, hey, I object to those three positions being excluded. There was no one being misled on whether those positions were excluded or not excluded. It was very clear pre-COVID that those positions were not being recommended and were excluded. So post-COVID, there was no need to continue talking about it because we had already determined pre-COVID that those positions were not going to be included in the recommended budget. Now, we talked about the DA's budget, and you mentioned, well, has there been an increase between 2019 and 2020? One of the things that I said to the board in my presentation is that while we funded the DA's budget, he's only expended 32% of his budget. And even this fiscal year, we continued to give him more than what he spent. And so I think it's unfair to say, you know, we're not giving him the monies to do what needs to be done for his department because he does have the funds available. The funds are currently available in his budget. If he elects to fill three positions, then he'll have to figure out, where am I going to come up with the shortfall? But based on past budget, it's shown that he's not spending the monies that have already been allocated to him. So there shouldn't be an issue for him to be able to operate efficiently. There shouldn't be an issue for him not to be able to do the work of the district attorney because the funds are available. If I were coming to you all saying, hey, look, the DA's budget has increased by 75%, and guess what, every fiscal year since he's been here, he's expended 99% of his budget, then guess I'm recommending that, I would have done that in the budget cycle. It's not a matter of not wanting to fill the positions, but Commissioner Thomas, we had to make some tough decisions on the needs of the county. If you recall, prior to budget meetings, we met with you all, myself and Mr. Johnson met with the commissioners, and we asked you, what are your priorities? We heard roads, we need to make sure our roads are taken care of, we need to make sure litter is picked up, I want to make sure parks are taken care of. And so that's how you develop a budget, based on what you all have identified as your priorities. If there was a need for those positions to be included, then during that March presentation, that's when those changes should have been made. It's not a matter of staff not wanting the district attorney to have the positions. It's a matter of we're holding everyone to the same guidelines and standards. Every department was told, here's your budget, here is how you have trended over the last three years. And based on your expenditures and based on how you've trended, this is what your budget will be. Again, Commissioner Thomas, we even allocated additional funding within the DA's budget, although he didn't expend all that he was given last fiscal year. And so I think that, whether you all appreciate it or not, we are understanding that we have needs within the organization. It's not just the district attorney's office. It's every department within this organization that has needs. All I'm saying to the board is that we don't need to utilize fund balance for this type of expense, and that if it's the will of the board, I will have a conversation with the DA to proceed with him utilizing the funds that are currently allocated within his FY '21 budget. With that said, keep in mind, we are still coming back to the board for a mid-year adjustment as directed by the board when we approved our FY '21 budget. And we will have an opportunity at that time to add any additional funding or any additional items that you all would like to add. But Commissioner Thomas, I will tell you, although our splosh and lost revenues are up, we are spending money in this organization. There are still other needs that we're trying to meet. There are requests from the board members that we're trying to take care of that may not have been a part of the initial budget process that we're trying to see through the finish line. And when you have unplanned expenditures, we have to figure out where we're going to pull that money from. Yes, we do have a very rich fund balance. And that's because this board has made sure that for the last two years, we have managed our budget without the use of any fund balance. That speaks volumes to where we are. But it also goes back to what Commissioner Clemens says in terms of an emergency. We have a rainy day fund, and I can tell you, we're going to need it. It's going to get to the point that we're going to have to utilize it. So again, as I've said to the board, the funds are available. Now, in terms of, and I think you mentioned that other people have been hired on since COVID, you are absolutely correct. Those are vacancies within the organization that would have already been budgeted within the budget for that particular department. Now, if there's been any new positions that have been added on, it's because constitutional officers have the ability to add new positions. We have four constitutionals, tax commissioner, clerk of superior court, the sheriff, and the probate court judge. Those are the four constitutionals that have the authority to create whatever they want to create, as long as they stay within their budget. But we are trying to work with every department on what their needs are. And we're also trying to make sure that the needs of the board are being met as well. And while, you know, $167 million seems like a lot, it goes quickly. One of the other things that I think is important is that we will not receive, our main source of revenue is property taxes. We will not receive 90% of those property taxes until December 1st. And so I can advise this board to dip into our fund balance or to work towards unplanned expenses before I know that we're going to collect on our property taxes. Just two or three meetings ago, we talked about people being evicted from their homes. So if you're evicted from your home, you can't pay your property tax bills. And so those are all the things that we have to consider. Again, my door remains open to have a conversation with the district attorney regarding the positions as I have done in any other case, whenever the DA has reached out. We have tried to work with him on whatever his needs are. And so I don't want it to be to the public that we're not doing for the DA, and we're leaving these positions out, and people are going to be, you know, things aren't going to get done because they will get done. The resources are available in the current budget to address the request as presented.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Thomas?
Well, I heard a lot that she, I heard a lot that she said. And I do understand the processes that she's talking about. And she put a lot in there, which could really make people not understand the general direct questions because there's so much added into sharing. We're not talking about the budget process, we've gone through that. We're not talking about everything else that you're talking about, per se. We're talking about the DA office. The one thing that was stated is that, what is, did he receive an increase from 2019 to 2020? That's a yes or no answer. Do we have the ability to fund these positions? That's a yes or no answer. We know across the United States that there's been an increase in crime. Domestic crime has gone up. We hired 20 different officers, which adds an additional load to his office directly. That's something we need to talk about. Okay, you talk about other budgets already have these position budgeted, then cut their budgets and move it to DA because that's where we needed it. So it doesn't make sense for you to say, well, we found something in the 911 operators, and it was already budgeted for the 911 operators. And so we didn't, we filled them, but we know we needed this in DA. I'm simply saying to you, let's just look at what we have a definite need for now. This DA is saying, I need some help. I need some help to get through these cases. He can't get through it with the workload that he has. He has 20 new officers bringing in all these cases to him. And we have not given him the tools that he needs to get through that workload. So now, we can go back and forth about how to use fund balance, or when to use fund balance, when it is emergency, and that clouds the picture for the people that's watching. I think we need to get to what we're talking about, how to help the DA.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Thomas? I want to make a comment, and then we can respond. Commissioner Thomas, anything else you'd like to add at this point?
I'm finished for the moment. Thank you.
Okay. Well, my comments are, I've got my big budget information. And yes, it is proven on March 10 that this information that referenced the DA's positions is included, that this board did approve during the budget process. I do want to say to the county manager, every year, this process has gotten better. And I want to say thank you for all of the effort that has gone into it, along with involving this board. I am definitely, I think it sounds like, well, let me just suggest this. I think that you should approach the DA to talk about how to fill the positions that we have without using fund balance. Those are my thoughts about it. I agree that, you know, we've got to get this addressed, especially based on the data that you presented, that the funds are available to move forward with that. I think that's a good thing. I do also agree that we've got to begin thinking about, yes, we don't know what our property tax revenue and collections is going to look like based on the challenges that many of our families are having. I do respect the budgeting process. And if we're going to go back and try to take money from other departments to fund any position, that reopens the whole budgeting process, which is what you're planning to do. Now, the question I have is, you're starting the process in October. What would allow us to see that sooner than later? But again, I think we won't know until we begin to see the property tax collections that we need to get. The other question that I have is, how many, what are the unplanned budget expenses that we have that's especially been driven by this board that we can rescind as we look at the overall budget process going forward? Because I do believe that we've got to look at every department because, again, we're into COVID. Yes, things may look good, but we still do not know where we're going to end up. And we, again, need to work within a budget. The budgeting process is key. And I do agree that there needs to be some communication between the county manager and the DA to fill these positions, especially if the funding is already there without using fund balance. So those are my thoughts and my questions regarding where we are with this process. So are there any other questions or comments, Commissioner Holmes?
Yeah, again, we're talking three very important positions. It's not going to impact fund balance. When I made the motion a couple of weeks ago, the motion was to find the money. And we put fund balance in the motion as an option. But if there is another funding mechanism, the county manager can also go in that direction as well. But we took, we took a request for three very important positions to prosecute serious crimes in our county and made it about the entire county, which makes no sense to me. It makes no sense at all. And so I'm just asking that we can use a little common sense as a board and give the DA and our public safety community the resources that they need. Bottom line, bottom line, let's not make it about parks and rent. Let's not make it about, you know, the building department. We're talking about the DA's office. That's all we're talking about. We're talking about three positions. And at this point, we're not even funding an entire year. We're funding, we're funding almost a half a year of three positions. $100,000, $125,000? To fund three positions, three positions to keep our county safe? Let's use common sense. It's just that simple. This is not difficult. It's not geometry. Let's do something that makes sense and protect our citizens.
Okay, I'd like to go, and then we go to Commissioner Barn. My comments, just to make sure that we are clear. Based on the information, and I'm glad that we did allow the county manager an opportunity to present more information about the budget. But as I have heard today, I don't see why this board even needs to vote for the DA to move forward to fill his positions based on the data that we present. So again, I just say that the county manager and the district attorney needs to get together, move forward with filling the positions. And again, the goal is not to use fund balance, which I'm kind of hearing from others that we don't need to do. So I just think we need to move forward to fill the positions based on the information that we received today. So those are my thoughts, Commissioner Barn.
Chair, and I agree 100% with what you're saying. Chair, I think that was a great presentation you put out. Again, if we had had this information beforehand, I think we would have got this resolved without even having to vote on it. I don't see us having to vote on it now. It appears to me that the county manager, with our direction, can get with the DA, get this worked out with this budget, and then we'll address it with next year's budget. And we'll figure it out. But, you know, about the fund balance and all that, if we ignored all the information, the money's already there. It's in the budget. They'd even adjusted budget high and low too, and moved forward and worked with the county manager. That's all it, if those two would have got together and talked it out, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. But that didn't happen. But anyway, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay, so are there any other questions or comments? I do understand that our district attorney is, did sign up for a public comment, and we did agree to amend the agenda to allow him his five minutes during this time. So we moved it from the public comment section to follow this presentation. So we welcome our district attorney, Mr. Darius Patillo, at this time.
Chair, I don't believe that he is signed in. We did send him an invite. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't realize he was in commentary B. My apologies.
Okay, good evening.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, good evening.
Yes.
I'm Darius Patillo, the Henry County District Attorney.
Excuse me, District Attorney, we can only see a portion of your face, so we can't see, there we go. Okay, okay, I'm sorry for interrupting.
I was last before this board two weeks ago, approximately on Tuesday, September 1, to give this board an update on how the COVID pandemic has affected the office of the district attorney. I informed you that due to the emergency judicial order of the Georgia Supreme Court, certain critical elements of the court system, including grand juries and jury trials, have been suspended for the last six months. As a result, our court system, just like every other court system in the state, is experiencing an unprecedented backlog of cases. The Supreme Court has now authorized the Georgia courts to reopen grand juries in the state. It has also said that jury trials could resume as soon as next month. Once we reopen these functions of the court system, the DA's office is going to be flooded with cases to indict and prosecute. Presently, we have more than 500 felony cases that must be presented to the grand jury when that function resumes. Our office prosecutes thousands of cases each year, and the courts have been unable to move major felony cases for half a year now. One of the purposes of the DA's update was to let this board know that we need additional resources in order to effectively and efficiently protect the citizens of the county. I want to be very clear that my presentation was not an attack on anyone. My presentation was a plea for help. And I'm making this plea to this board because you have the power to help me. My intent as DA has always been to be transparent in all communications with the county and the public. I sent a memo to the budget department on August 10 to again request funds for a crimes against children prosecutor, a gang homicide prosecutor, and an investigator to support them. This request was communicated to the county manager. On August 12, I was added to the board of commissioners' agenda, two weeks prior to my presentation. The next day, on August 13, we were told by county staff that the county manager did not need to, did not need me to come to the red folder meeting. County staff was not blindsided by this. On October, August 27, a commissioner inquired by email to the county manager that it was their understanding that these positions had already been funded. The county manager responded that these positions were not funded due to COVID. But these positions were never even recommended by the county staff to be funded prior to the shutdown, which is evidenced by the staff's PowerPoint presentation to you that's dated March 10, 2020. I have always made it known what our office needs are and have always been available to answer any questions about why we need these requested resources. You trust the county manager. Well, I'm asking you to trust your district attorney, that when I come to you with a request that you know that is a real need, and I want to be able to trust that when this board instructs the county staff to do something, that they're going to do it. These are the same positions I requested from you in February of this year, pre-COVID. Everyone was here. The county manager was here. All six of you were here. It was a public meeting. At that time, we were all on the same page. And all of you said you supported our office getting these positions. All of you said you supported the protection of our constituents from domestic violence, sexual assaults, and gangs. I want to also be clear that I'm not saying that the county has neglected us historically. What we received in the past is what we needed in the past. What we may get in the future is what we will need in the future. But I'm talking about today, what we need right now. The last time I was here, I rattled off several serial, serious cases that have occurred since the COVID shutdown. In the two weeks since I last spoke to you, we have yet had another homicide in McDonough where a man was murdered in a shooting. We needed these positions pre-COVID. We definitely need them now. Child abuse organizations support these positions in our county. I understand the stress and having the stress about cases and managing an office and working through a court system during a pandemic. But I shouldn't have to stress about getting the resources I need to do the work of the people. Contrary to what you may have been told, as it stands right now, we got a 0% increase in our budget this year. The board needs to know that. This board needs to know that. The community needs to know that. At the DA's office, we are the ones who have to look child victims in their faces and their families and the mother of a murdered teenager, and explain to them why the system doesn't move fast enough. We're the ones... We're the ones on whose shoulders domestic violence victims cry on when they are waiting with bated breath for jury verdicts. When it comes to keeping us safe from dangerous offenders, we at the DA's office are our last line of defense. I'll take any questions you may have.
Well, uh, thank you. That was your public comments. So we appreciate, um, those comments, um, our district attorney. Um, so at this time, uh, we'll, we'll go back to, um, see if there are any questions or comments, um, from the board. And I think, uh, I had a question that wasn't, uh, I asked the county attorney that I've not, um, I mean, the county manager, I would like to at least, um, go back to if that's okay. And then we'll come to Commissioner Clement. So we'll invite up now, um, the county manager. So, um, basically, I, I think I heard you say that the, the funding is available within the district attorney's budget to fill the positions. Um, has there been some limitations on why, uh, positions could not be filled by the district attorney or any other court system at this time that may have positions that need to be filled? Or, uh, help me understand that. And then the other question that I still need to know is that there are several unplanned expenses, um, special that came from this board. What are they and how much?
So Chair Wood, if there are vacancies within respective departments, regardless of the department, those vacancies have been filled or are allowed to be filled specifically in the judicial system. Um, and because we're talking about the DA, he had positions that he had interviewed for prior to COVID. Sent me an email, hey, I need to get these positions filled, because I think HR was holding them up, saying that he couldn't have the positions filled. I authorized those positions to be filled. Um, so if there is a vacancy that was already on the books, meaning we had already budgeted for it, then those positions can be filled. If there are new positions, then the, those positions, um, any new positions have not been approved, um, by my department, um, because the direction that we received from the board was to hold where we were from the previous, um, fiscal year. One of the things I want to make sure I provide clarification on is the DA is absolutely correct that his budget was not increased, nor was anyone else's budget increased, because we held everybody's budget at their, at their mid-year number. And then finally, and I know you didn't, I'm going to have Mr. Smith come up and talk to the budget expenses, um, the unplanned budget expenses that we have documentation on that we, we can provide this evening. On August 10th, and I think the DA quoted August 10th, um, as the county manager receiving notification or a request was told to him in terms of not attending red folder. And I know the board gets upset when I provide too much information, but it's important to get the facts out, because I want you all to understand that you all charged me with making sure that you all have all of the information. I received a request from the county clerk that the DA had reached out, because Commissioner Thomas had requested that he provide an update to the board. For updates, we don't normally require a person to come and sit through a red folder, because you're not asking for any action to be taken. You're just updating the board. So my decision for the DA not to attend was so that he didn't have to come to red folder, because he wasn't asking for any requests from the board. It was not an attempt not to allow him to come to red folder, but the information that was provided to me was just an update. And so I want to make sure that I clarify that. But then I also want to say this, because this is not how I operate at all, at all. I have a working relationship with every leader in this organization. And to have to stand here and go back and forth over something, in my opinion, that could have easily been, been handled at the county manager's level, I agree with you, Commissioner Holmes. This is too simple for us not to proceed. But here it is tonight, I feel as if I'm having to defend to this board a budget that was set by the board. And I, and I, I'm in a bad position right now. I'm having to stand here and explain to the board a process that we went through that included everybody. There was no hidden agenda, there was no mechanism to ignore anyone. We worked with what we had. And one of the things this board has charged me with is to approve, adopt a budget that has no impact on our fund balance. And at that time, the desire was to keep the mileage rate as we had it, because we knew that we had other expenditures that were going to be coming forth, specifically capital expenditures, specifically other expenditures that we were going to need to proceed with. But I'll tell you what I'm not going to do this evening. I'm not going to go back and forth in terms of what he said, she said. At the end of the day, the funds are available in the district attorney's budget for him to fund his three new positions. If this board elects to amend his budget when we bring a mid-year adjustment in February and give him additional funding, that'll be up to the board. But my job is to advise you all on where we are from a financial standpoint. We cannot just haphazardly make decisions on funding, because it impacts every decision that we have to make. And so Board, you may hear my frustration, because I am frustrated. I felt during the September meeting, I was told it was going to be an update, not a request for positions. And the DA knows that anytime he's reached out to me, I'm going to make it happen for him. And so I don't want there to be this perception that I'm working against the DA, because my job is to work with every department head, elected official, and constitutional officer that we have here to provide you all with all the facts. And that's one of the reasons I asked this board during this budget cycle to allow every department to present to you all. It was a long, all-day process. It was tiresome for all of us, but I wanted you all to understand not only how the department's operated, but the needs of the department. At the end of the day, our job is to make recommendations to the board. But this board set the budget, and we were very clear on what positions were included and what positions were not included. And so Board, I ask that you all allow me to manage this county, work with our department heads, and to do the right thing. If you all have made clear to me, you want the DA to have the positions. My job is to tell you how that's going to happen. And I've told you, the funds are currently available in the district attorney's budget to fund the three new positions. I'll let Mr. Smith come up now and give an update on those amendments, Chair Wood.
Okay, uh, thank you. And then we'll come to Commissioner Clement. I'm gonna act, uh, allow Mr. Smith to, um, provide the update that I've asked for regarding what amendments have been made.
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, I do so wish that everyone's getting a, a good picture of the talented team that we have here. And because I'm not allowed to debate our eloquent attorney, I will not. I'll just talk about what we have going on for unbudgeted expenses that have been approved by this board for the past two months. I'll talk about the monument expenses, sixty-seven thousand. Streetlights for six months, twenty thousand four hundred. We plan to have a building for elections, that's close to two and a half million dollars set aside. Just in repairs alone, seventy-two thousand dollars. Fuel station repairs, ninety-eight hundred dollars. Then when we were doing the certificates of participation, what we had to do was an environmental assessment, which is about twenty-three hundred dollars. We're total about two point seven million dollars, within two months of unbudgeted expenses. What questions do you have?
Uh, nothing, and I just wanted to clarify why I asked that question, because I know, um, we, we got to hear from others that, um, are in the court system that have, um, important public safety needs, um, just like our district attorney. So we better get ready to consider all of that. So that's why I asked that question. All right, okay, but again, we got to be thinking about, you know, the good thing that I've heard today is that the funds are within the DA's budget, and I just don't see, uh, I don't see what's holding up the process for him moving forward. So those are my thoughts. Okay, Commissioner Clement.
Couple of things. David, um, before you sit down, uh, thank you for all of the stuff that you named that we had spent money on, but there was a lot more that was spent that the board doesn't know about, that the public doesn't know about, when there were COVID expenses that you guys authorized without it coming to the board for approval. There's a whole lot being spent from departments, um, that we're not talking about. So I would recommend that we not just throw out certain things, unless we're going to throw out all the things. So there was a lot of money that was spent, um, that I know of for Plexiglas being put in places that was never bided out, uh, for PPEs that was paid for to people that came up to the county that was never bided out. So there was a lot of stuff that was paid out. So I want to say that that list is extensive, and it goes beyond just the things that you talked about. But I didn't think that the DA had an ample opportunity to state his case, and I would like the DA to come back up to the mic, because, uh, the board, uh, has heard that our county manager has said it's in the budget. Our chair has said it's in the budget, and another commissioner, I think, said something about it being in the budget. I want to hear what the, uh, uh, but if it's in the budget, then why do we have to amend it again in February? Because our budget goes from July to June. So it's either money's not spent that's in the budget, but there's some convolution there that I need the DA to explain, nobody else but the DA. And I would appreciate this board to allow the DA to speak, not interrupt him, not cut him off. He didn't even get to finish his stuff. Anybody else would have said, I want to ask the board for more time. We didn't even allow the man that opportunity. So I want the DA to come back up to the podium, and I want the DA to tell me, why is our county manager saying that it's in his budget and it has to come out again, that we need to vote again for it to be there in February?
Um, if it is the pleasure of the majority of the board, we will do so. Um, so, um, if the majority, uh, so those who would like to hear more from the district attorney, please signal by raising your hand. Okay, all right, okay, we welcome you back, Mr. District Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. And this is why I'm here, because I feel like I have no other recourse. I need things to be on the record, because this, today is my first day hearing somebody say that the money is in my budget, because it has not been, and it hasn't been before today. So miraculously, where they're saying this money has come from, I, I don't know. But I can tell you this, that I think they're talking about salary savings. And I can also tell you that, I may be mistaken, they can clear that up. But salary savings are when you have vacant positions. Let me be clear that the DA's office presently has no vacant positions. The county manager mentioned, uh, positions that were filled during COVID. That was one position we had, a victim advocate position. It was something we had posted pre-COVID, interviewed for early COVID, and that position was filled, although it was initially frozen. Anytime you have vacant positions, there are salary savings. We have been told specifically by county staff that we cannot use salary savings to fund new positions, uh, or to use that money in any other way. I've been specifically told that. So I don't know where they're saying this money is, but I have not had, I do not have the money in my budget for three new positions to fund new, three entirely new positions. I have a specific number of positions in my office, they are all filled. We have zero vacancies. And the reason I came to this board, and I get on top of the bu- budget process every year at the beginning of the year. Ask anybody. I come to everybody in January, because I want to know what the process is. We follow the process to a T in the DA's office. They tell us what to do, we do it. When they move the goalposts, we move with it, regardless of how inconvenient it may be. So it's a little disingenuous to say that the money's are, is there, and it's always been there. I don't know what he's up here talking about. That's just not right, it's not fair, and it's not completely straightforward. And, and you need to know that. But I, so I don't know where they're talking about this money miraculously came from, because they didn't tell you that. But we can tell, we, but we know when we met two weeks ago, they didn't say that. And if that were the case, on the March 10th date where they gave the PowerPoint presentation, why were the positions excluded? If the money was there. I never heard anything from the time I talked to this board in February of this year. I didn't hear a thing from anybody from staff in terms of whether I got these positions or whether I did not. The budget was passed in June. I got an email from the county of what the budget was in July. And as you all know, we were in the middle of COVID. So there's a lack of communication there. So I'm here because I need you to make this decision, to help me out. I have gone through the budget department, I have sent memos, I do talk to people, I have reached out to Commissioners. So I'm here just to state my case, to be zealous for the state of Georgia, to be zealous for our constituents, and that's why I'm here. That's it. Now, everybody want to talk about numbers and all this? But what I'm telling you is that we're dealing with human beings and lives and careers in our office, and you can't quantify that with numbers. You just can't do it. We're not creating widgets on an assembly line in the DA's office. That's not what we're doing. So you can't compare our office to any other office as if it's the same. And I'm always willing, I'm the most mild-mannered person in the county, I, I'll talk to anybody. I'm very clear, I'm very thorough, we manage our budget well. Yes, some, there, there may be some funds not spending, spent, spent now, because we've been in this COVID environment. I just told you that we haven't had, been able to have jury trials or grand jury, but they're going to open up. Everybody wants us to open up as soon as possible. And all I'm asking for, if you want these courts open fully, we need to be fully staffed so that we can do this work effectively. That's all I'm saying. That's it. It's not that complicated. The money, if, the money is not there, if I can't fully fund these positions for, in perpetuity, the money's not in my budget. They're saying, I got the money to hire somebody now, first time we've heard that today. But if we're going to have to do some, some adjustments at a future time, then that means the money is not there. That's not completely true. Now, I'm not a budget analyst, I'm a lawyer, but I can read and I can count. And I have no reason to come up here and make any of this up. I've never come to you in this fashion before, and I've been here four years. I'm here because we are at a critical moment. And I've talked to many of you about this, I know how dear this issue is. That's why I cannot understand why I find myself in this position. I feel like I'm caught up in the middle. I'm not trying to play any politics here, I'm trying to do my job that the people elected me to do. Period. So yes, I'm frustrated.
So, so Chair Wood, I want him to come back up, because, you know, we're the board here, not the county manager. We hire the county manager, we hire everybody, we're the board. And all we need to do is to make a decision as a board. And the only reason that this district attorney, I'm embarrassed for our district attorney, I'm hurting for our district attorney. I cannot believe that Henry County Board of Commissioners is putting our judicial system, our district attorney's office through this. We need to just take a vote. And this is the last time that I think we need to vote on this. And, and all we need is four out of six to say that this is an important part. This is for any other reason, to fund these positions, we need to fund these positions. You've heard it, you know, if, if Sherry tells me it's in the budget, then I want to hear from the district attorney, because I have no reason to believe her that it's not, unless the district attorney is saying it's not, she's saying it is. Right now, that's something that we need to work out later. But right now, this board has the power to fund these positions right now. The money is not in the budget, and if it is in the budget, we're going to have to come back and address this again in two months, three months, whenever, uh, Sherry's going to bring it back to us again. But I don't want our county manager having to go up here and she's, she said it, I'm not going to keep doing this. Everybody's frustrated. This board needs to make an executive decision, fund these two positions, and we deal with it later. And I don't think it's a lot to deal, we're talking about three hundred thousand dollars. We're going to spend a whole lot more than that. So that's the only reason that I wanted him to come back, Chair, because I think that at this point, we need to decide, are we able to make executive decisions or are we not? And live with the decisions that we make.
All right, well, well, thank you, um, and thank you, District Attorney, for coming back. Um, in response to what you just said, Commissioner Clement, um, from what I clearly hear is that, first of all, there needs to be some communication between the county manager and the district attorney to fill the positions. That's what I've heard. If she says that the money is there, we've had our, um, finance director that has come and actually stated that there is funding there. I say, let them move forward, and then if they need to come back and there is some issue as to why the money is not there, that's different. Now, again, I'm in the same position as, as the county manager. When we first began this conversation, we were supposed to have an update. Never once was there a resolution that spoke specifically about the positions and adding, uh, making any new funding changes at all. That was never a discussion. That's why we again tried to have a, a special call meeting so that we could talk about the full information about what was really there to move forward with the budget. And I'm still hearing that right now, all the county manager and the district attorney have got to do is sit down and move forward to fill the positions. That's what I've heard clearly. So I don't understand, again, why we're still having this conversation after we've had an update, um, uh, from the county manager, who's had time to go back and look at where things are today. The problem, I think, is still a big problem, is that there's been no conversations between the county manager and the district attorney to resolve this issue so that it did not have to get to this level. I'm embarrassed for everybody, because I cannot believe that we're having conversations and a debate when it's been clear that the funding is there based on the analysis that has just been presented. So again, I'm not sure what the debate is. What I keep hearing is that the funding is there, that the positions can be filled, and there's nothing stopping that from happening, other than the fact that the county manager and the district attorney needs to sit down and work out this process. That's what I've heard.
Chair Wood, I also heard the State Department say that he wasn't there. So I don't know.
Well, but, but again, with the district attorney, excuse me, with the district attorney- Well, but, but again, with the district attorney, excuse me, what the district attorney said is that this was a surprise to him today, which meant that there was no conversation before tonight. Lack of communication. Lack of communication is what we're dealing with right now. That's the problem that I see as the issue right now. Fill the positions, get the district attorney the positions that he need, and so that we can move forward to address the issues that have been presented. That's what we're supposed to be deciding upon right now.
Can we vote to fill?
We've approved the budget as a Board of Commissioners. The county manager has done a due diligence. She's come and said, let's move forward. They need to sit down and move forward to, to fill the positions.
Yeah, can you call for the vote?
Let's vote on it.
We don't have to vote on it. I don't have to vote on something that the county manager had. Okay, well, let me do this.
I want to make a motion.
Okay, so, excuse me, I'll, I'll begin it. Based on what you just said, what the resolution is that I'm proposing is that the county manager and the district attorney sit down and to move forward to fill the positions that are being stated and analyzed and assessed by the county management team without impacting fund balance.
I'd like to make the motion.
Okay. Wait a minute. I, I made the motion. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
You're the chair. You got to call for the motion.
Okay, well, I called for the motion. I called for the motion and I make the motion that I just stated. So County Attorney, can you clarify whether that is within the ethics guidelines or not? Because there's always a question about what the responsibilities of the chair is and is not. So County Attorney, can you clarify? And if I'm in error, I will correct it.
Your ordinances don't go into that much detail, but I, I think a motion was made, and if it's seconded, the board should vote. If it fails, then you can call for an alternate motion.
Okay, I made the motion. Commissioner Barnes seconded it. What other questions or comments are there? All in favor, please signal by raising your hand. All opposed? Okay, well, that motion fails.
Commissioner Thomas, would you like to make the motion?
So apparently, there is a motion to, for, now open for another motion. So at this time, who's making the motion? Commissioner Thomas?
I'd like to make a motion that the three positions that the DA need be fully funded at this point in time, and that that be done for conversation between he and the chair. And if those funds are needed from fund balance, that it be approved. That's my motion.
The chair or the county manager?
Excuse me, I've got it. Okay, so if you clarify the motion, Commissioner Thomas.
I'd like to make the motion that the position requested by the DA's office be fully funded. Fully funded, meaning if those dollars are needed from fund balance, that it be approved by this board tonight, and he work with the county manager to fill these positions expeditiously.
Oh, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'd like to make the discussion, because the motion includes the use of fund balance, and we already know that the funding is there, I am not going to support this. I think that the county manager and the county, district attorney needs to sit down and move forward with what has already been stated. And if there is any issues with the fund balance, then it needs to come back to this board based on all the fact that has already been stated that we've spent more money than even what has been mentioned by the district, by the finance director. I think it was already stated that we spent more, not just the items that were here, but we spent even more money than even what has been stated. And because of that, we've got to recognize the fact that the budget has been, has been already identified with unplanned expenses. The other thing is, the county manager is already about to begin the whole review process right now. October is just right around the corner. And at the same time, I have the question of how can we accelerate that? So that, because not only that, because if we're going to start funding more positions and funding positions, we need to be thinking about what we can stop. I mean, I had the question still of what expenses has this board committed to that can be rescinded? Because we've got to be wise in what we're doing, and we've got just a couple of months away before we really know where we are in the property tax collections, what could be a big issue for all. So again, I don't see why we can have, we cannot allow the district attorney to move forward with the county manager to fill these positions without using the emergency fund for this county.
Madam Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner Thomas, can you restate your motion? I don't think you need to use fund balance, but if you can restate your motion, your motion asking the county manager to you, to look for alternative or other funding mechanisms that we may have, that's not that much money. We have millions of dollars laying around everywhere. It's not that much money to fund three positions, a half a year for three positions. It's not that much money, and the county manager should be able to find that money somewhere.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. I'd like to make a motion that all three positions requested by the DA's office be fully funded expeditiously, that he is to work with the county manager to find funds available, alternative funds available, to make this happen expeditiously.
Okay, that's a second. Can you clarify what you mean when you say alternatively? I'm not sure if I understand that, what you're talking about. Are you talking about?
The county manager stated that she has, there are funds available to fill these positions now. The DA stated he doesn't know where those funds are. I'm simply saying they are to work together to locate these funds that one says is available, that one says they're not available, they don't know about, to fill these positions expeditiously.
Okay, I've got a question for the county manager. County Manager, are you there?
Yes.
Based on that motion, I think I understood you say that the funds are available within the, the current department's budget for those three positions. Is that what I understood you to say?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. So my vote, if your motion says this, is that the funding for these positions comes from the district attorney's department budget. I am definitely in support of that. And then, of course, if there is any reason that it goes over, then it definitely causes a budget amendment for something else on other expenses. So I'm, if I'm supporting that motion, if in fact it comes from that department's budget. So I saw Commissioner Wilson, and then we go to Commissioner Holmes.
I was trying to clarify.
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure where the county manager says the funds are. She says funds are available. She did indicate the money is in his budget. He did indicate if he's allowed to use what he called, I believe, salary savings positions, then maybe it is in there. If she's going to open that door to let him use funds that he's not been able to use before, that's fine. We just want her to find the money and make sure the positions are funded. If she knows of money that he's not aware of, then they need to work together to fill these positions expeditiously. That's what I'm saying. Now, I am not going to try to figure out what she knows where those funds are.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Commissioner Wilson, and then I saw Commissioner Holmes. Commissioner Wilson?
So if the funds are available in the DA's budget, there's no need for us to vote. So we need to leave it between the county manager and the DA. So there's no need to vote on that.
Well, let me respond. I, I think Commissioner Wilson, considering all of the discussions that has happened and the conversations, I think that this board does need to, to have some level of agreement as to what direction to give to the county manager. Because again, it's been going back and forth, and we just need to have a clarification. And this is what resolutions are about, to help us clarify what the majority of the board prefers. All right, Commissioner Holmes, and then we'll come to Commissioner Barnes.
Yeah, again, this is not that difficult. We have multiple budgets in this county, and I'm pretty sure we can find $100,000, $150,000 to fund these positions. We have a motion on the table, Commissioner Thomas. Her motion is to fund the three positions with, with, you know, whatever funding mechanism the county manager can find, even if that is fund balance, if we have to, but I'm sure we don't have to, have to go to fund balance. And we have a second. So, you know, I think it's time that, that we vote on this measure, and either, either, either it moves forward or it fails.
Okay, well, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Holmes, to me, just confused the motion a little bit because I thought you had clarified that we were not going to use fund balance. So, well, we'll hear from Commissioner Barnes. And I just think that the, the motion need to be clarified. And before we vote, I just want to make sure that the county attorney clarifies the motion so that it is clear to all what we're voting for. Commissioner Barnes?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'm in total support. Let's move forward. We need to vote on this. I don't want to put it in that we're going to start using fund balance to fund these positions. It's already in there. The county manager says it's in his budget. And I trust the county manager. It may be some thing, but Mr. Tillo said he does not have any openings at this present time and all his positions to fill. So the money's there. I think we need to move forward with it. We need to vote on it and put this behind us.
Okay, so Commissioner Holmes, and then we're going to call for a question. I'm going to ask the county attorney to clarify what motion he heard from Commissioner Thomas. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Holmes.
I just want to make sure that, that we're clear on the motion. Commissioner Thomas stated that she motioned that we fund the three positions and that, that the DA and the county manager work together to find out where the actual funding is coming from. She did not mention fund balance in her motion, but we have a number of budgets where we can pull $100,000, $150,000 from, being sure that we keep our citizens safe. So let's, let's stop trying to confuse the motion, and let's just have a vote.
Well, County Attorney, can you clarify the motion that, or clarify the motion you heard? And Commissioner Thomas, can you clarify what your motion is that the county attorney has just noted? Okay, County Attorney?
Well, I'm no better equipped than anybody else is to, to interpret the motion that was made. But the way I understand it is that obviously, the county manager and district attorney are to work together to find funding to fund these positions. The question I have is, are you also approving a budget transfer if a budget transfer is necessary? And I think that's, to me, that's the outstanding question. If, if in order to fund these budgets or these positions, funds have to be transferred into the district attorney's budget, then I believe that would require a budget amendment approved by the board. And the county manager, or your finance director may want to qualify that. I don't have the budget resolution in front of me, but my recollection is that the county manager can adjust a budget within a department, but she cannot transfer money from one department to another without board approval. So I think that's, in my mind, that's the bit that's a little bit unclear.
So Commissioner Thomas, will you clarify that motion, please? Okay, and you're muted.
My motion is that this board approves filling the three positions requested by the DA's office. The DA and the county manager are to work together to find the funding needed to expeditiously fill this position. In addition to that, if that does require a transfer of funds from one department to another department, be it the DA's department, let that happen so that we can take care of our citizens.
Okay, all right. Heard the motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? I will just clarify that my vote will be that we work within the DA's budget. And based on that motion, I'll have to vote not in support of it. So we've heard a motion.
Can you call for a vote first?
That was my comment. We have an opportunity after a motion and a second to make comments, and that was my comment so that it is clear about my vote. Okay, so we've had a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Thank you. Resolution fails. Okay, are there any other motions that can help us move forward to get our DA's positions filled without using fund balance? Commissioner Barnes?
I make a motion that we approve this move to allow the county manager and the district attorney to sit down and work out the things that they need to work out. The money's in the district attorney's budget, and we need to move forward with those funds. She says it's there. And if it's not there, then I'm going to have a real problem with our county manager. And so we need to move in that direction and, and then go with that. That's it.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? I'll second that motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further conversation?
Yeah.
Commissioner Holmes?
Okay, before this whole process started, you guys said we didn't need a vote for this, for the, for the DA to use whatever he currently has in his budget. So I don't really understand this vote. It makes no sense.
Just to clarify, Commissioner Holmes, that was the point that I made earlier when the very first motion was made, that, you know, if the county manager and the, and the district attorney can move forward, I don't know. I know Commissioner Wilson came back and said, hey, I don't think that we need to vote on this. And I basically responded, wait, excuse me, and I basically responded that because there is so much confusion about what direction the county manager needs to be given, that's why we are now trying to get at least a resolution to clarify the direction to the county manager.
It makes no sense to vote on this. I mean, if the DA, if the DA has the money in the budget, and you guys are saying, hey, go use the money that you have allocated for other things, it makes no sense for us to vote on it. I mean, you know, he runs his budget, and, and since this measure didn't pass, let's let the DA handle, handle his department the way he wants to handle it. There's no need to tell the DA how to spend the money that has already been voted on for his department.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. Commissioner Thomas? You're muted. Okay.
I can support the resolution that was stated. If he's willing to amend it to state if there is a need of transfer of funds, we authorize transfer of funds from other departments. I have other areas to fill these positions.
Okay, so Commissioner Barnes, that was a request to amend your motion. Any comments regarding that?
If we have to take money from another department, then I think it needs to come back forward.
Okay, so your motion remains the same. Okay, we had a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner, Commissioner Clemens?
Chair Wood, you were correct. We don't have to have, and Commissioner Wilson was correct. We don't have to have a motion for him to use what he has. We haven't made that motion at all. We don't, we didn't vote on that at all. We didn't need to vote on it. You were correct, Chair. Every motion that we have was not that. So to say, use what you have, there is no reason to vote on that.
All right, so thank you, County Attorney. Any comments regarding those procedural orders or procedures that are just being challenged?
Well, there's a motion and a second. You can, you can vote on it, or the, or the motion can be withdrawn.
Very good. All right, thank you, sir. Okay, so we had a motion and a second and comments and a clarification. So all in favor of that motion, please raise your hand by, signal by raising your hand. Okay, and those opposed? Okay, okay, so County Clerk, I hope you've got that for the record, to oppose, and that motion and four in favor. All right, well, thank you much.
No, that's four against it and two in favor.
Excuse me, thank you for the clarification. Two, that was in favor of the, of the motion that was made, and four against it. Thank you. Okay, all right. Well, we'll now then move to our next agenda item, which is a resolution that I'm bringing to this board, and it's regarding the designation of the Henry County's Voting Delegate for the annual ACCG policy agenda. I know there's been several emails that have been going back as Um, I know there's been several, um, emails that have been, um, going back as to who the voting delegate should be for Henry County. And, um, basically, um, each county, um, each year, the, uh, the ACCG has an annual policy agenda. And basically, this is the policy agenda that allows input from county officials from across the state to come and give, um, input into policies at the state and even the federal level. And basically, our, our process, the ACCG's process is, is that each county selects a, a voting delegate to attend the annual policy agenda meeting. And, um, we're allowed one voting delegate and we've got to identify that individual, um, this week, uh, which is why it was added to the agenda. Now, um, absent a vote by the governing authority, which is the Board of Commissioners, um, the chair or sole commissioner, CEO or mayor of that government usually represents. Over the last three years, we've not voted on this, um, primarily. Um, it has not been, um, something that has been brought to of, of, of question. Um, so I've served in that role. I have actually, um, uh, solicited input from all of the commissioners and, and also the county manager and have represented, um, this Board of Commissioners during that policy. I do know that last year, um, Commissioner Thomas expressed an interest to, to serve, um, as the voting delegate, which I have no problems. Um, as I have communicated with the board, but I then received a note that the vice chair wanted to serve as the delegate and, uh, make sure that as we consider these, I have the email right here. I can read the email specifically. That basically said, um, from, um, Commissioner Clemmons. Um, let me pull it right here. Um, I'm, I, I, I'm not in agreement with this unless we adopt a policy to rotate. I would also like to serve as a delegate. So Chairwood is Chairwood respectfully asks that you draft a resolution to rotate this role as, um, Commissioner Thomas has requested. However, you cannot just designate Commissioner Thomas. Secondly, please consider making sure that the role is rotated in a manner that the designated commissioner has tenure in their seat to avoid a first-year commissioner being the delegate. Um, and Commissioner Thomas, if the chair refuses to create a resolution to rotate, I would ask that you draft one to support your fair process of giving everyone an opportunity. And so that is where the confusion began. Um, I also said, the reason that I'm proposing the resolution that, uh, if everyone wants to get an opportunity, the vice chair, um, which is rotated every year, we go by district numbers. Every year, um, to, um, select the chair, um, has been our practice. And that's why, again, I was, uh, pro- proposing a resolution, um, that the vice, the vice chair serves as the delegate, um, in this year, um, based on that email. But at the same time, I have no problems if Commissioner Thomas, who has been attending a lot of the policy meetings, um, to actually serve as a delegate. But we felt like we needed to at least get some resolution as to who will be representing, um, the Henry County as the voting delegate. So the, the resolution is before you, um, and, um, I'm open to however you want to serve and to make sure it's a fair process. Again, um, Commissioner Thomas has been, has expressed some interest in serving. And again, I have no problems with whomever wants to serve, but I'm trying to at least get some resolution from this board so that we can give the county clerk the guidance as to who's gonna be serving. And we've got to submit that information this week. So I'm open up for any discussions from anyone regarding, um, the resolution that's on the table. And more importantly, we need to identify who's gonna be the voting delegate, um, for the, um, for, to represent Henry County at the ACCG policy agenda meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes, but Commissioner Thomas?
I do, I do think the resolution is, is well-written in the way that it is. The one thing I was asking that in, in, uh, in circumstances where the vice chair cannot serve, that it rotates to the next, um, commissioner in line instead of rotating constantly back to the chair. That was the only thing I would like to see us suggest. And that way, we can make sure all the commissioners have an opportunity to serve. And they may choose not to, but then it just goes to the next one, goes to the next one. And that way, everyone's had an opportunity to serve as the voting delegate. That was the only change I would like to add to the resolution.
Okay, and, and just a point of clarification, um, um, Commissioner Thomas, um, every year, uh, each, each, um, vice, every commissioner, I should say, does get to serve as a vice chair. So I just wanted to clarify that. Um, so, um, again, um, in the case that you're recommending, if the vice chair, um, you know, declines to serve, then so it would go, then go to District Three, um, as that commission. And I have no problems making that change in the resolution. So I'm, I'm, that, again, that is, that is not a, a major concern at all and I, I have no problems for this. So if that's the recommendation that you would like to make to the resolution, uh, what we'll do is the then-serving vice chair, or she'll serve as the county's voting delegate for ACCG policy. And then let me, uh, I think, uh, let's see. And then the designation of alternative voting delegate. In the event the vice chair is unable or unwilling to serve as the voting delegate or if the vice chair is otherwise unavailable to attend, then the wrote, I, 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 I'm not sure, um, County Attorney, how to get that next, um, next, um, commissioner in there. And I see Commissioner, uh, uh, Clemmons has a comment before we actually make any final changes.
Chairwood, why don't we just stick with the same procedure that we have for, for our vice chair? So if the chair is out, the vice chair takes the role. If the chair and the vice chair is out, then Patrick, there is another procedure for that. We should just follow the same procedure, not to convolute anything, just follow the same procedure across the board. And Patrick, so what is that procedure? Uh, when the chair is not there and the vice chair serves and the vice chair is not there, then who does it go to at that point?
There, there, the code doesn't designate that. What would happen is the, the four remaining board members would meet and have to select someone to manage the meeting among themselves.
So Chair, Commissioner Thomas, what we can do is we can say if the vice chair is unable, then the vice chair can appoint somebody to, to serve in their place. Or the chair can, um, appoint somebody to serve in the place, but we don't want to convolute it. We really need to give that designation and authority somewhere to make it really clear. Cause keep in mind, we'll all be gone probably before this goes again. We want to make it very clear. So I, that's just a suggestion that we need to try to be consistent with it. Or if you want to keep it consistent with the, the four that's remaining would vote. Um, but I think we should let the chair choose if the vice chair can't serve.
Um, I, I, and actually, that's what I was planning to do, um, and before we actually got to this point. Because, um, it all started when I was going to appoint, um, Commissioner Thomas. But what I hear you saying, if the vice chair cannot serve, then allow the chair to appoint someone. Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, and so, but I want to clarify, what you were trying to do was to appoint someone and you didn't have that. You weren't even the person that was supposed to go. We were supposed to vote anyway. And because we didn't vote, then the chair went. And so then the chair took that as an authority to appoint. And so that's why I was saying a resolution needs to be made. So we're doing the right thing now. I'm glad you took my advice in putting a resolution in place. I see Patrick shaking his head. We have to put processes in place. So, um, that's what we need to do. And if it is for the chair to do, I'm okay with that. I just want to give you the authority to do that, Chair. I want us to put it in the resolution that that's what the chair, that could be another responsibility that the chair has to do. So, uh, the chair would serve, uh, or the vice chair would serve. And if the vice chair is unable to serve, then either the chair will appoint who will serve in that place or the vice chair was, uh, appoint who will serve in that place. So, um, Commissioner Thomas, who did you say would make that decision? You said it would rotate, but it needs to be.
My concern is one thing, just to give every commissioner an opportunity to serve. And when we give one person an opportunity to just appoint, that's not an opportunity for everyone to serve.
So the way to correct that is.
That person can.
We would rotate.
Wait, 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 Commissioner Thomas has got the floor. So go ahead and finish, Commissioner Thomas. I'm sorry.
Our goal is to give every commissioner an opportunity to serve in that capacity. That's it. And if we leave it in the hands of the chair to appoint someone, that chair can appoint the same person over and over again. So I, I, I'd just like to see it rotate. When the chair goes, then it goes to the vice chair. If the vice chair cannot fulfill the position, then it just rotates to the next commissioner that would be going. That's all. And if, if everybody say they can't go, then it goes back to the chair.
So we'll go to the next person.
Wait, wait, okay, wait a minute, uh, just a minute, okay, or, okay, I think you're done, Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Clemmons. And then we'll go to Commissioner Barn. Commissioner Clemmons, as you were responding?
Yeah, so the way it will go, then it will go to the next person who's in rotation for vice chair. And then it still continues to rotate. I just wanted to clarify that. So it will be the, uh, chair would serve, uh, Chairwood, cause I think you were trying to get the resolution together. So the vice chair was the voting delegate. If the vice chair is unable to serve, then the next chair in line for vice chair would be the next person to go.
Okay, alright, so that's what your comments. I saw Commissioner Barn and then now Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Barn?
Thank you Chair. And, and I'm just sitting here thinking about it, uh, the co-chair. So that means the chair's never gonna serve on this. And so my thoughts is, is let the co-chair do it. And then if the co-chair can't do it for some reason, then it rotates back to the chair for that following year. And then, uh, it goes back to the next one in line the following year. And if they can't serve, you let the chair do it. That's just my thought. What do y'all think about that?
That's a good one.
Okay, let's hear Commissioner Wilson.
So if the vice chair can't make it and it goes to the next person in line to the next year, they'll serve twice. They'll do it two times, back to back. Correct?
Okay, well, we've, we've had this.
No, that, that, that wouldn't happen, um, Miss, um, Commissioner Wilson. If, 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 if the vice chair, which is District Two, cannot serve, then it will go to the next, which will be Commissioner, uh, of D Three.
Right.
To the next person. And if that one cannot serve, go to the next one, D Four, D Five, D Six. I would back to the chair.
No, what I'm saying is if the vice chair cannot make it this year, okay? So it goes to the next District Three and next year, he's gonna be the vice chair. So he'll be serving back to back.
Oh, no, oh, see, his turn would have been used. He, his turn would have already taken place. So it should go to the next one.
You're gonna skip over him though, so you skip over.
Already did twenty twenty.
Uh, alright, uh, okay, let's see, I saw, um, um, I, any other com- wait, wait a minute, just a minute, one at, one floor at a time. So I go, so, are you done, Commissioner Wilson?
I'm done, I'm just.
Commissioner Barn, I, I, alright, Commissioner Wood, yes.
I, can you have, uh, can we make the motion with, uh, Commissioner Barn's request? Cause if it goes to the chair, then I think we're good. Vice chair, then if vice chair can't serve, it goes to the chair. And the next year, the third position, if they can't serve, it goes to the chair. But at least everybody get a chance.
Perfect. Okay, well, I want to hear that. Commissioner Barn, I saw you raise your hand before Commissioner Clemmons. Anything else? And then we're gonna go ahead and call for question to, uh, open the floor.
Yeah, I, I, I think all this, uh, is gonna get too, uh, confusing and so, uh, simple, we keep it to the bottom. Uh, but I do think that would be the way to do it, do it whether the co-chair is, and takes on this, uh, job. And then if for some reason they can't do it, it reverses back for the chair for that year. And, uh, the chair will be missed as long as somebody, uh, else does it. But if they can't do it, it does give the chair an opportunity to fill in for that time period. And I think that, that would probably resolve all our issues and keep things kind of in line where we won't forget about it.
Okay, uh, so we've called for a question now. The floor is now open for a motion.
I would like to make a motion, Chairwood, that the, uh, delegate for ACCG would be the vice chair, uh, of that year. And if the vice chair cannot serve, that the chair would serve in their position.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Any further conversation, comments, discussion? Okay, all in favor of that motion, please raise your hand by signaling. Okay, um, any opposed? Just to make sure I got that. Okay, and I just see Commissioner Holmes' hand. Okay, it looks to be unanimous. Okay, well, we've identified our delegate for, um, for the ACCG. So thank you, um, policy process. Okay, so at this time now, we'll move into our public comments. And this is a time where we welcome citizens to voice their county-related services, uh, comments, I should say. And because we are being held, um, uh, by virtual, um, uh, those who sign up for public comment, um, had to sign up prior to tonight. And so I'll look to the, um, county clerk to identify who, um, is, if anyone has signed up for public comment and they will be granted five minutes to speak.
Chair, we have one speaker tonight, which is Robert Kopek.
Okay, um, so we will begin our public comments session now. And Mr. Kopek, are you there?
I am.
Okay, um, you may begin and I'm looking for the timer of the clock as well. So thank you.
Alright, good evening, board and constituents. Uh, we got some issues in the county, potholes and traffic, kind of our biggest complaints. Uh, as far as the DA's positions, if we would have went to that special call meeting last week, we probably could have handled this last week and not dragged this out another hour. Uh, if you got rid of apartments and townhomes and would have proven them, that also would help the DA and his budget. As far as things I'm seeing, I've been watching a lot of stuff on Facebook, but hitting people out of bounds. If you're in college football, get you flagged, get you kind of known as a poor sportsman. And the same thing, if you go on Facebook and call your, uh, board a joke, you know, you're part of that board and really calling people names, your colleagues, constituents and people that county manager on social media is just really wrong. When not attending workshops, special call meetings, it's part of your job and missing them is unprofessional. The chair's position deserves respect. Missing two special call meetings is unacceptable. You should show up, hear the request and vote. Seems like tonight, we're so worried about Darius Patillo's, um, stuff, but we didn't show up last week for a meeting. Being bullying the co-chair and the other commissioners shouldn't happen. It's unprofessional. In two thousand eighteen, we had a, a rezoning meeting and it was a, uh, about a gas station over at East Atlanta Road and Rex Road. And Commissioner of that district stated, should be what the community wants. He said he'd never approve a gas station because of crime. Yet recently, uh, approved apartment complex in the same area. Uh, I'm not sure to double standard. With these virtual meetings, you're not seeing the community come out because some people don't know how to use the computer. Some people don't think that you guys even listen. I know for a fact that emails aren't returned from some of the commissioners. Um, I can say that, uh, Chairwood responds to every email I send and I appreciate Chairwood for that.
Well, please, let's not mention names, sir, but thank you. It goes even for accolades. So we've got to be consistent. So thank you, sir.
But the three recent rezonings, uh, that the community did not want, there was a, a public supermarket on Kelly Town and, and one fifty-five. And it was putting sewers through, uh, neighbor properties. The community spoke out, said we didn't want it, yet it got put, put through. We then had a, uh, townhome at the corner of Springdale and East Lake Parkway. Community didn't want that either, but that got approved. And the apartments in rural area Fairview, that was approved. So I would ask the board that on these rezonings, until you can get back into meetings, if we can meet at a nightclub in Ellenwood and have virtual me, or have meetings there, we can, we can meet, uh, in person at the board. We can do it safely. We did it the other, uh, we had to go a few weeks ago when there was a statue that came down and we had to make public comment there. The, uh, the problem with our board right now is the respect issue from some of them, not showing up and not answering. It, it took an hour to get no resolution on the DA's position. And just to figure out who we're gonna have for, uh, this last vote took, took too long. So and the last comment I would have is if you, you rent from or you partner with somebody, you probably should have abstained from voting on their rezoning request. It's probably really unethical. And that's all I got for tonight. Thank you for you guys' time.
Alright, thank you. Um, so County Clerk, are there any other, um, just to confirm, are there any, any others that sign off just for the record or signed up for public comment?
No ma'am.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll now move into our next agenda items, which is the, um, approval of minutes, um, for, um, the July twenty-first, twenty twenty regular Board of Commissioners meeting. Um, if there are no changes or revisions, we will now accept a motion for approval. Okay, I saw Commissioner Barn and then Commissioner Wilson as a second. Any discussion, comments or revisions to the minutes? All in favor of approving those minutes, please signal by raising your hand. Any of, okay, anyone opposed? I saw a late hand. Okay, so that looks to be a unanimous approval. We'll now get into the county manager's comments. So County Manager, are you there?
Yes, Chairwood, I'm here. Um, I do have three and I don't know if I're, thank you. Three items, um, for tonight's, um, just an update to the board. Um, over the last couple of meetings, I've heard from the board in terms of not having enough information or being prepared to make decisions on items. And I know there, there was a resolution which was presented, um, regarding workshop meetings. What I would. What I would like to do is, we have a red folder meeting prior to every board meeting. And in the red folder meeting, we go through not only all of the items on the agenda, but we really navigate into what the purpose of the item is, if there's any questions or concerns from management and/or from the county attorney and/or any respective departments which may be impacted by it. So what I'm recommending to this board, and I hope that we can proceed with it, is that we convert our normal red folder meetings to red folder workshop meetings to give the board members an opportunity to participate in the red folder process, to understand how we get items on the agenda, but specifically so that you all are prepared for those items before they get to the board. What this is, is just a meeting in which staff presents the items to, typically to myself, the Deputy County Manager, and our county attorney, and then we provide comments back regarding the actual items before they're scheduled for the agenda. So what I would like to do is ask this board to allow me to proceed with coordinating with our county clerk on advertising our red folder meetings as workshop meetings and afford the opportunity to the board to participate in those meetings. If board members are not available for the meeting, no harm, no foul, but it will still give that board an opportunity to participate and ask questions of staff so that we are prepared when we get to the meetings for what those questions may be. But also to give the board members an opportunity to ask questions that you may have before the day of the meeting. And so I just wanted to put this out here. Chair, I don't have a resolution for it. I just really wanted to let the board that this was the direction that I'd like to move in, but would certainly welcome any comments, pros, cons, or concerns that the board may have as it pertains to red folder workshop meetings.
And if we can, I would like to hear from the board regarding that proposal. Any thoughts or questions about that, Commissioner Clemens? So I see Commissioner Clemens, then Barham, and then Wilson. Okay, Commissioner Clemens?
Yeah, I need Patrick on. Patrick, can you talk a little bit about what is mandatory for us as a board as far as meetings are concerned? I know that we have two meetings a month that we are to attend, but I don't want to add additional meetings on us that are mandatory. I know our budget meetings and things like that, we attend, but I'm not sure what this workshop meeting is. The red folder meeting has always been there, and every commissioner has been invited, and it's been open to every commissioner from day one. And Chair Wood has been real good about saying, "All y'all can come to red folder meeting." So I don't know why we're making it a workshop and what would be different than what we already have. So Patrick, if you would just speak on that.
Sorry for the delay. I've been enjoying my ability to be anonymous behind this.
Can you talk a little louder too, because I've heard for the last few meetings that they can't hear our attorney?
I understand that. So there's really no specific meeting that is mandatory for the board, for the members of the board to show up at. The regular meetings, the first and third Tuesday of the meetings of each month are the meetings, they're your regular meetings. They're the meetings that I think you would be expected to show up at. All other meetings, called meetings, special called meetings, emergency meetings, those are kind of extra meetings. There's no law that requires you to attend any specific meeting, and there's no law that would require you to attend those workshop meetings. I think the goal in calling them workshop meetings would be to allow a discussion on the record. If a quorum of the board is present, then there would be minutes kept. And I think that's the purpose for making it a workshop meeting. The risk of not calling these meetings as official meetings is if four of you want to attend. There's a red folder meeting coming up Thursday, I believe. And if staff is sitting in the room and four commissioners show up, you have just convened a meeting, and we can't have that. So I think the purpose for going ahead and designating those as called meetings of the board is in case four of you or four or more of you are interested enough to show up during the day at one of these red folder meetings, we have given the appropriate notice, and we can then convene a meeting of the board. You don't have to do anything, you just sit and you would hear the presentations. So that would be the reason for calling these called meetings.
I mean, okay.
So Chair, I want to continue with that. So yeah, so the issue with that, and I want the board to know that the issue with that is that if four members show up at this workshop, then a vote can take place. And business of the county can operate in a workshop meeting opposed to having a meeting where our citizens are aware that we're going to be having public hearings and commenting. And Patrick, I want us to have this discussion because that's the danger of having this workshop meeting that has been publicized. It would also authorize this board to take action in those workshop meetings. Is that correct, Patrick?
Yes, you could. If a quorum convenes, you can act. So we did in the resolution that I drafted at Commissioner Thomas's request, you've all seen it. I put in that resolution a prohibition against taking action at a called meeting. Now, that prohibition, obviously the board can change its mind. You can't prohibit yourself from acting. But that is a risk. If four of you meet, then you can take action. And I understand, especially when you have a board with, that results in a lot of three to three votes, that's a danger. If a quorum is present, and it's less than all six board members, then a vote could happen that might otherwise not happen. And that is, that's a legitimate concern. I think you should, the board should consider, you know, how to address that situation.
And more specifically, I want to talk to Gary and Johnny in the fact that we have a board danger that is that next year in January, if there's four Democrats on the board and two Republicans on the board, and you have these workshops, even if Patrick puts in the policy that we're prohibited from acting, that board on that day can take that clause out that day and act. So I think this is very dangerous. I think that the policies and the way we've been convening, having red folder is good. I don't think we need to be adding, and I don't know which commissioner brought this before this board, but I think this is a very dangerous workshop. It's a very dangerous policy to add, and I think what we've had is good.
Okay, so we've heard from Commissioner Clemens, Commissioner Barham, then Commissioner Wilson. I see Commissioner Thomas now raising her hand. Okay, Commissioner Barham.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. You know, I've always supported the workshops, and I understand what Commissioner Clemens is saying. But at the same time, the workshops that I have attended, it makes me better informed on the decisions that we make. A lot of times, I already know before we get to a meeting, how I'm going to vote on a particular item. It would, I would like to have something wrote up that we could not amend anything and take action on something. That would be a scary part of it, but I would like to see us, just like staff has a way to move a certain item to the consent agenda. If you had four commissioners, I guess you could move it to the consent agenda, but then you could amend the regular agenda to take it off the consent agenda. If anybody had a problem with anything, but I just thought it may be a way to, so we could better be better informed. I know the last red folder I attended, Commissioner Thomas was there. And I just thought, you know, it's probably just a good education, it's low-key. And, you know, they wouldn't be televised, I don't guess. But it would be something that the manager could, we could really dig deep into some of these issues that we get tied up on in a regular meeting sometime, like a couple items we had tonight. We probably could have worked out through this through the red folder workshop thing. But anyway, that's my comments. Thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Wilson?
I think Commissioner Barham pretty much covered everything that I was going to cover because I think it is important that we can attend to listen and to adjust things on the agenda and get more informed, and we can put a lot of items on the consent agenda. Now, I'm like Commissioner Barham, if we could put, make it a non-action type special call, well, workshop. So I would support that.
Okay, Commissioner Thomas?
I want to say that I did speak with Patrick about the workshops and special call meetings. I would love to have the freedom to attend these meetings, to get more information about different subject matters myself. But the danger is, is what Commissioner Clemens brought forth. All of us tend to stay away from these meetings because we don't want to be caught with four-on-four and not be able to vote and represent our constituents the way we want to. That's the danger. I asked Patrick, can he put forth some type of resolution in place saying that if indeed there is a workshop that we sign off stating that we will not do any voting, make any decision, that these workshops are for information and discussion only. He said, "Let me look into it," and I asked him also, "Special call meetings, why don't we attend?" It's not that we don't want to attend them, but we understand if we come there and I'm the only one there, and other people don't show up, then we can have anything added to that agenda. And it'd be voted on and changed. So I can't come to a dogfight knowing good time where there are four bulldogs against me. I won't do it. So we have put ourselves in positions where we don't come to certain meetings because we don't want to be put in a position where things are voted on, and we don't have the full representation of the full voice of the commission there. Now, when we have the regular Board of Commissioner, that's a whole different thing. But when you have a special call meeting, there should be one topic, one issue, one thing to vote on, and that's it. When you have a workshop, it should be one thing that we're going to do. Listen for information and have open discussion, no voting, nothing would take place on prior issues. Nothing can be brought in to be voted on, nothing can be changed. We listen for information, and that should be it. But if that can't happen, nobody's going to attend these special call meetings. And it's not done to be disrespectful to the chair. It is not done because we don't understand the process. It is not done because we're trying to be protesting against something. It is done because of the unsurety of what would be added to that agenda. It is done because of the unsurety who will actually come to the meeting. That's the reason why you don't have commissioners come. And if we can find a way to position ourselves for information only, and commissioners will not walk in and say, "Oh, it's four of us here. I want to add this to the agenda. I want to call for a resolution. I want to call for a vote." Then we could come to these meetings and be educated more and more about the things about the county. As it is now, we are calling Sherri 101, sending emails 101, asking for information 101, and she can't repeat everything verbatim to six different commissioners. It just won't happen. So that was one of the reasons I asked Patrick to help us, so we won't have these meetings. It's almost 10 o'clock now. We shouldn't do that if we have the opportunities to have discussion and information without feeling like we're going to be accosted in some form or fashion on a resolution or vote. So I am the one that asked Patrick to look into this.
Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
So responding to Commissioner Thomas's comment about people being absent, that's what we do now on a regular board meeting. So when there's someone absent from the board meeting, like myself and Chair Wood, I miss one, you miss two. They walk on resolutions, and they pass them because they know they got enough support. So there's no difference than a workshop having that than what we do in a regular board meeting when somebody's absent. So you can't say that we don't do that because it goes on a lot. It's been, it's gone on three times in the last two months, three months. And there's a, anyway, so you can't use that for an excuse.
Okay, I saw, I saw Commissioner Thomas, then Commissioner Clemens.
In the general meetings, I understand the general Board of Commissioner meetings, that is the opportunity to add to agendas, take from the agenda, who cannot be there, that's a part of the general meeting. I'm speaking only in a workshop or a special call meeting that we set up parameters by which we can operate so that we can participate in these meetings without feeling accosted by anybody. That's what I was referring to.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Clemens.
Commissioner Thomas, I want Patrick to state again, I don't care how much Patrick put it in the resolution. If we riding in a car together four to four, if we in a board meeting, if we out of the state four-four, we're not supposed to do anything. We didn't call a meeting. You cannot prohibit this board from acting if we've got a quorum. I don't think you can prohibit this board from acting if you have a quorum. Even at that quorum, we can change that resolution that was done tonight. We can do a resolution right now, and four of us can get together 10 minutes after, and we can change that resolution. That's the power of the board. So a red folder meeting, I say is needed. We have a red folder meeting. Anybody can attend. Gary can go and hear everything he want to hear. Johnny can go, they can hear everything they want to hear. All of us can go. And the red folder meeting is already in place, but adding an additional workshop that we advertise, that we're having, four people there, I don't care what Patrick does tonight, we can act.
Okay, anything else, Commissioner Clemens? Did you need the county attorney to respond to that?
They may not believe me, so Patrick, you can join in.
Commissioner Clemens is correct. You know, you are the legislative body for the county government. And if you create a rule that says you may not do X, Y, and Z, then at the next meeting or later in the same meeting, you can create another rule that says, "We may do X, Y, and Z." So if you approve a resolution that says we will not vote on anything at a red folder meeting, you could, a quorum of the board at a properly called meeting could vote to rescind that resolution or that ordinance, and you could then take action. There's only two ways to solve the problem that's addressed. One is that you agree to do it and you all stick with it. That agreement would not be enforceable in any way, but that's one way. The other way would be, and I don't recommend you do this, would be you have the legislature change the law as relates to Henry County. The legislature could prohibit you from acting. Now, you know, that is, we could present that at the next legislative session if you so choose, but I would suggest that if you open that door to the legislature to restrict your legislative ability or your power as governing authority, you can't limit them. If you ask them to take one step, they may take 10 steps. You know, I don't know if you want to open that door to the legislature or not. So those would be the only two ways that you could achieve a meaningful prohibition on taking action at these meetings. So I think it's, I do think it's a sticky widget.
Alright, well, I'm going to speak, and then I'm going to allow Commissioner Barham to speak. I do think that workshops with the whole board is, it would help, I guess, to help, you know, discuss a lot of things. So I think that what we may need to do, as we do with the calendar every year, is at least plan a workshop meeting in conjunction with a red folder meeting at certain times during the year, especially when we know we've got budget or insurance or other things that we know we're going to need to have conversations with. And that would be my discussion because the experience that we've had is that we've had some of these workshops before. And Patrick, I need to come back to you. I'm sorry, Mr. Jockstetter, I need to come back to you in a few seconds. But there have been times when we've had workshop meetings and we didn't have everyone there. And then when we brought the item to the agenda, it was almost as though we didn't even have the workshop meeting. And there was a lot of staff time has gone in, the dynamics changed because someone may not have had all of the questions or information at that time. So I just think that if we're going to have workshops, the whole board needs to be there. It would address the Open Meetings Act. But again, I think they need to be strategic because many of the commissioners, they have, you know, other commitments and so forth. So that is my thought. But the question that I have for you, Mr. Jockstetter, is if there is a workshop, and again, I'm still thinking through what Commissioner Clemens has brought to point, if you have the majority there, then action can be taken. So I think I've answered my own question about that because, again, I was just trying to think through, do you have to have a quorum or not? But I think we've kind of vetted that. So I think either we're all going to be there or we need to find, you know, again, some ways to have conversations. So, but anyways, those are my thoughts.
Well, there is one other possibility that you could consider. Well, there is one other possibility that you could consider, and there's, there are problems with this other alternative, and I know the county manager and I've talked about it before, is you could, you could slow the board meetings down. And what I mean by that is, at some point, you could say, we're not going to vote on things the first time they're presented. Everything will be presented at one meeting for presentation and discussion, and you will wait and vote on those items at a subsequent meeting. Now, the problem with that is, there's operational problems more than anything else. You will have issues that need to be acted upon, that the delay of two weeks or three weeks, depending on how the calendar falls, may cause you to miss a deadline or miss a threshold. And a lot of things happen, you know, what the world doesn't see is the work that goes into these board meetings. We will start, we've already started, your staff has already started working on your next board meeting. And if, you know, the time may come when you just have to do what a lot of cities do. They require two readings of things before they act on it, perhaps. You could begin to try to transition to that. Now, the problem becomes the transition. You know, to make that transition, you'll have to have a couple of really difficult, really long, doubled up meetings. The burden you'd be placing on your staff would be tremendous to look into the future that much further and try to anticipate things that come up. But that's, that would be another solution. So instead of your workshops being at a workshop meeting, your workshop would be at a regular board meeting. You would have old business and new business. Old business would be voting on the things that you've discussed at previous meetings. New business would be discussing things that you won't vote on until the next meeting. That's something to consider. I think there would be, I think before you decide to do that, I think you need to give your management staff an opportunity to think through it and make sure, anticipate the problems that'll come up with it because problems will arise from that. And it just pushes things out, slows things down, but at some point, that would become your new normal. So that's something you may want to consider, maybe not, but that would be a way to give yourselves the opportunity to hear about something and not put yourselves at the risk of, you know, the gamesmanship that comes from less than full attendance at a board meeting or at a called meeting.
Okay, well, we've got Commissioner Barm, and I'm just going to suggest that this was a good discussion, and then we just have more conversation if people have, if the commissioners have additional thoughts after today, and then the county manager can come back based on feedback and conversations today. But I want to hear from Commissioner Barm, and then, again, we just want to move us to the next item of update that she has. So Commissioner Barm.
Thank you, Chair. After listening to Commissioner Clemens and everybody else and the comments on it, I kind of think maybe we better leave it like it is and don't go down that road. I think it's important for commissioners that want to attend the red folder, attend the red folder meeting and let it be limited to say, hey, three commissioners is all that can come to the meeting, and if you get in that room first, if you're the fourth one, you got to go home. And, you know, that way, if you want to come and be better informed and if you've got something going on in your district or whatever, then, you know, maybe somebody might walk out of the room while you come in and do whatever, somebody. But I think it ought to be a policy that no more than three commissioners be at a red folder meeting and let the county manager continue the way she's doing it. I do believe that we as commissioners really ought not walk anything on at the last minute, you know, maybe blindside whether it's me, you, or anybody else. But I do believe the county manager should be the only person to be able to walk something on as an emergency because we're going to have those kind of things like Patrick said, and I would like to see that policy put in place. But that's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm hearing lots of different things, so why don't we leave it as it is? But again, I just want to make sure that the majority of the board is here, but I still think that there may be times where we're going to have to have some workshop type meetings depending on what's going on, and we'll have to address that as we can. But, you know, those red folder meetings, I think, again, are something that all commissioners are invited to, and of course, we have information about a week before the meeting or at least a couple of days before the meeting, that gives us some chance. But I think the county manager is trying to respond to what I do agree, I still think that we should have some type of workshop meetings and with this conversation set for me today that we need to all be there. But I don't think we're going to come to a resolution on that today. County manager, I think you've gotten some feedback. Commissioners, if you have additional feedback on any changes we need to make, then we can revisit that at another meeting with a resolution. So county manager will now come to you for your next update. So thank you, commissioners, for that discussion.
Thank you. Next, you'll hear from Chief Ammerman, just as a update on our Police Citizen Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Just a quick update, we're moving forward, we're real excited about getting this committee going and building that dialogue with them. I have all the training curriculum down, the classes are ready. I guess the biggest holdup right now is I need the board to actually appoint their members. I haven't received members, appointees from all of the board yet, so Joe let Stephanie know, we'll start that vetting process. Currently, they're in different stages of the vetting process. Truly, my end of it, the vetting process only takes a matter of hours, it's just getting the initial application filled out and getting it turned in to staff so we can get it rolling. So as far as that, as soon as we get all the members, we're going to have that first class and we'll get things going. Everybody's really excited about getting it going.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the board to the chief? Okay, well, I heard you very clearly, I've submitted mine, so anybody encourage all the commissioners, please, to submit your appointee. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
And then the final item this evening, I did promise the board that I would provide an update or at least allow for a discussion regarding police services for the city of Stockbridge. If the board will recall, we did receive a letter from the mayor and council regarding the board revisiting the agreement that we have currently with the city of Stockbridge. I did do some research and working with our police chief and his staff and did indicate to the board that my desire was to go ahead and proceed with responding to the city based on the county not wanting to amend the current arrangements. I did hear from some board members that you all concurred with that assessment, but I also heard from another commissioner that there was another approach that she would like to consider. Because I don't have a majority of the board giving some approval or at least some thoughts on it, I did want to bring to the board to just, again, I know it's late tonight, but to have some discussion on whether there is a desire for me to continue working with the city of Stockbridge regarding police services or if it's the desire of the board for me to go ahead and proceed and just make them aware that at this time, the county has no desire to amend the current arrangement, but would like to hear from the city in terms of a timeline of when they will look to at least start creating their own police department. Again, there's not a resolution tonight, it's just more or less a follow-up because I have received emails and calls from the city manager just wanting to know if the board's going to take any action or has a position on it. I'd like to kind of put this to bed because this is an item that we discussed during SDS in link with the city manager and with the city representatives, and I think I understood from the board that there was no desire to change the current arrangements. So Chair Wood, I'd just like to open it up for a conversation with the board to make sure that I'm receiving the right guidance, and then I will prepare a letter to have all of the board members sign on behalf of the response back to the city.
Okay, well, we've heard that statement request from the county manager, any comments from the board? Commissioner Barm.
Thank you, Chair. Sherrie, I like the agreement we have now, and I wouldn't be interested to change it. Took us too long to get this agreement in place, and until the city of Stockbridge decides to have their own police department move that direction, I would want us to stay right where we at. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or thoughts from the board? Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Barm, we just say what we have, I know they wanted to split revenues, but that don't even make any sense to me, but anyway, I just move forward what we already have in place.
Okay, thank you. Other comments?
Okay, well, I'll state my position. I too do not suggest that we amend the current arrangement, however, I am very, very interested in working, the county manager and the city manager working together to help determine next steps for the city of Stockbridge to develop their own police department. I mean, they're our largest populated city right now, and even as we were going through some of the COVID conversations, many of their decisions were based on the amount of resources that the county may have, and that should not be the case for things that they need to do. So versus trying to address this segment of it, I would rather, again, my thoughts are is that we began moving towards, what are the next steps so that the city of Stockbridge can make sure it has its police, its own police department, because that's what they need, in my opinion. Okay, any other thoughts? Okay, that was three. I'm not sure if you need any further feedback for the majority to get your letter, or we need a resolution. Let me know, what are your thoughts? Because you've spoken to some, but you've heard from three today.
Yes, I did hear back from Commissioner Thomas regarding the approach, and I did speak with Commissioner Holmes directly. I know, Commissioner Clemens, you had a different approach in terms of not just saying that we weren't going to proceed, and I didn't know if you wanted to have further discussion with the board on that, or if we could just go ahead and proceed with the letter. Obviously, you all will get an opportunity to review the letter before it goes out, but I needed to kind of get this finalized because, as I mentioned, the city manager wants to know if the board plans on taking any action on it. I didn't feel that we needed a resolution. I think the board members have been very clear in terms of their position, and at this point, we were just going to proceed based on the current arrangements. Commissioner Wilson is correct that the letter provided to us by the city indicated a desire for them to retain fines and forfeiture fees that we're currently collecting because the city of Stockbridge pays no additional fees to the county. And so based on just the information that we've been able to gather based on the resources that we are spending within the city, I would not advise that we amend the current arrangements that we have in place.
Yeah, so Chair Wood.
Yes, Commissioner Clemens.
So Sherrie, since you mentioned my different approach, I will just say that, I mean, we're talking about the fines and forfeitures, that's one thing, and then we're talking about the police department of Stockbridge is another thing. At the end of the day, the citizens, I don't care where they live, they're still county citizens. And so I'm very adamant about that, that we have to do what we have to do for the county citizens. And I did say that I don't think we should just say what we're not going to do and shut the door on the city that we're supposed to be working with. We're talking about unity and working together. I think that we need to continue to have a conversation with the city of Stockbridge, city of Stockbridge government. I think that we need to continue to talk about helping them to move to the plan, because if they've got a plan and they're looking at moving to the police department or having their own police department, we need to talk to them about that. We need to talk about how do we phase our police department out, how do we phase out those funds that we are collecting that we will no longer get? So it's not, you know, we're not going to talk to you, Stockbridge, we're going to keep it the way it is, and you do what you do, and we're doing what we do, that's not how we operate. And so I did send a letter saying that we need to continue to have a conversation with the city of Stockbridge. We don't need to just shut the door and say, we're going to keep it the same, and I don't see nothing wrong with it because eventually, we're going to have to make some changes. So, you know, I put it in an email so that it would be public record, so anybody could look it up. But I think we need to continue to have a conversation with Stockbridge about how do we help them transition into their own police department, because at the end of the day, the citizens are still Henry County citizens.
Okay, all right, well, thank you all. Any additional comments or questions you have, county manager?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Okay, any other updates that you'd like to share?
No, ma'am, that's it.
Okay, so at this time, we're moving to the commissioners' comment, and we'll begin with our vice chair, Commissioner Clemens, District Two. Any comments? Okay, District Three.
It's late, Chair, I don't have any comments.
District Four. Commissioner Thomas.
Madam Chair, I'd simply like to say that this has been a very robust conversation tonight, and one of the things I want the citizens to realize is that we are committed to public safety and that we are not going to abandon that conversation. Someplace, somehow, it will continue, and they will be hearing more about what we're doing to support the DA's office for sure. We also want to say we understand that COVID-19 is still killing in the state of Georgia, so protect yourselves and realize that this virus is alive and well and is thriving, and we need to be ready every day to make sure we're protecting ourselves. With coming up to an election season, make sure you're registered to vote, that's very important. It's still time to make sure that the census count is up in Henry County, so prepare yourself and make sure your home is counted in the census. We are here, and these are hard decisions, and we are trying to determine how to work together, when can we get together? We're not afraid to come together, but we realize behind the scene what can happen. So those who are wondering why we didn't show up at certain meetings, it's because there are things that we know that you don't know. So thank you for the opportunity to disturb, and thank you guys for a long night, and if anybody has anything they want to bring to my house, I'd be willing to receive it, commissioners, I'm a little tired. Have a great evening.
All right, thank you. District Five, Commissioner Holmes.
No, no comments.
District One, Commissioner Wilson. Okay, my only comment is, I had a chance to experience the new ladder truck by the fire department, and I will tell you, I've learned more about why a mid-mount ladder truck is more efficient than a rear ladder, rear-mounted ladder truck, and just again, I'm just glad that this board is continuing to support public safety in ways, especially as we continue to serve our citizens. And I do want to agree that regarding the census, I know we've been given to September 30th, even though I think we should acknowledge that Henry County, well, that we have until October, but I got to make sure that, right now, the September 30th date is there. Henry County, last I heard, was above about 69%. And county manager, can you, again, just give a quick highlight about where we are and any targets that we're trying to meet? So I know we're trying to wind this day up, but September 30th is right around the corner. So, county manager?
Chair Wood, I'm sorry, I missed what your question was.
Yeah, Commissioner Thomas made a mention about the census. I just made a mention that September 30th is right around the corner. Our latest update, last I heard, was that we were at 69%, but we're going to try to target something else, so I just wanted a quick update so that, again, because this is our last opportunity to speak to citizens before September 30th.
Yes, Chair Wood, we actually, I think we moved up to about 69.7 now, so we are continuing to push forward. We've set a goal of 75%, so I need the commissioners to really, really push us getting individuals to respond to the census. We did have a census blitz that was scheduled for tomorrow, but we are expecting a very nasty hurricane and some remnants of the hurricane tomorrow, and so we did postpone that for next week. The deputy county manager is leading the charge in that, and he doesn't know yet, but we're going to have a census parade. And so we're going to get out and make sure that residents understand the importance of completing the census, because I want to get us to that number one spot. And right now, we're not in the number one spot, we're really pushing forward to get to that. So commissioners, please share on your social media pages any information that you have. We do have census swag, so if you all have people that are in need of masks, cups, hand sanitizer, we have all of that material available if you all are speaking, doing presentations or you're going out and you need to get that information out. But yes, 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 we're getting close to the finish line, and September 30th is fastly approaching.
Okay, thank you. And again, we want to compliment those who are working on the Henry County Census Complete Count Committee because y'all need to be commended. Henry County is the largest county in the metro area of its size that has at least been in the top 10, or so I know Fayette County is there, but they don't have the population that we have. So that Complete Count Committee has been serving well, and they need to be commended. So those conclude my comments. Regarding our upcoming meetings and events, our October 6th meeting is scheduled on 9:00 and is a regular board of commissioners meeting that will be an in-person meeting. And then our next meeting after that will be October 20th at 6:30 PM, and it's a regular board of commissioners meeting. So at this time now, we'll accept a motion to adjourn the meeting. I saw Commissioner Barm, then Commissioner Thomas, any discussion, all in favor, signal by raising your hands. All right, thank you, board, have a good night. Thank you. Thank you.